With the delivery of justice for all.
Kathy, would you do roll call please?
Councilmember Zerking?
Here.
Councilmember Masters?
Yes.
Councilmember Cramlett?
Here.
Councilmember Benson?
Absent.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Here.
Councilmember Hain?
Here.
And Mayor Fisher?
Here.
Okay, amendments to the agenda, there is none. Next will be public hearing. On the proposed 2011-2012 budget. We will now open the floor to comment. All people will address the council as a whole. And we'll do so with respect to everyone on the council. When you come to the podium, you will first state your name and the reason why you're speaking to the council. If you're here with a group to make a comment, pick one person to represent that group. You will be given five minutes to speak. Each person has spoken. At the end of the public comment, it will then be closed. A public hearing. At this time, it's open to public comment?
Yeah.
Public hearing, excuse me. Public hearing.
Is the time two minutes or five minutes?
Five.
I'll try to stay there enough and might hold by a minute. Good evening, my name is Jeff Loffich, I'm a citizen of Cascade Locks. I'm here to propose an alternative budget to the fire department. This proposal is to fund the fire department and protect the essential services from severe degradation. To substantially alter this department's budget as being proposed under this process would bring certain detriment to our entire community. It will bring significant increase to our risk, to our property, our lives and safety, to either citizens in the community also. This proposed budget will prematurely bring degradation to all the city's newly acquired assets. There's some brief facts and overview for some newer council members. In fact, fire EMS department earned about $89,000 in revenue for uncollectible accounts in the '07-'08 budget year. Although this was achieved, the city noted that there was a still and clear disconnect between today and the past demands of the two jobs of fire paramedic and chief and resources being provided. In other words, there's a disconnect between the fire chief and the funding of that position. And the disconnect is that there's two jobs. It's a paramedic and fire chief. And the resources that are being asked are provided by that one person. After there was a thorough review of the issue, including a $5,000 emergency services studies, seven months of council workshops, special meetings, a separate town hall meeting in December of 2009, council agreed to a new level of service to implement a partial solution to restructure demands that has been created by a disconnect by agreeing to hire a paid on-call paramedic as a test to determine revenue potential behind the additional staff. And the move, a modular building from the old fire station to the new firehouse would be able to house two to three interns as part of the shared program at the city of Hood River. At the conclusion of the six months file period for the paid on-call paramedic program, the city's billing was shown to bring a return investment of three to one. So for every dollar the city spends on a paid on-call paramedic, they were collecting three dollars of revenue after all the expenses were accounted for. The reason why the department was behind on billing always had to do with lack of sufficient resources to run the department, respond to calls and pursue council goals like recruitment, retention, building a fire station and the like. There was simply too much work for one person to do with two-plus jobs, fire chief and paramedic. The building situation will never improve if there's only one person. However, if you had two people to help with the job, you could improve that. These are facts that are from other cities. The city surveyed fire departments across the state of Oregon to determine how many departments would provide advanced life support, paramedic services, ALS, and a fire chief service with one full-time employee. One was found in the entire state, not including Cascade Locks. Many cities provide a fire chief service only, but no full-time employee. With only one full-time employee, but all others except one in Eastern Oregon have two employees to do the two duties. There are some that will say Corbin has a volunteer fire chief. However, they are a fighter district and they do not provide advanced life support services to the community. So how do we properly administer and fund this department given the resources available? Fully fund the fire chief's paramedic position. Fund the paid on-call paramedic program to at least $20,000 a year. This will bring the city another $60,000 in free and clear funds after costs to operate the department. This position is absolutely vital because it allows the city to generate inter-facility transportation revenue, which is a high revenue source with low-cost outgoing proceeds. This would not jeopardize the coverage in our area. What that means is if we have the fire chief, the fire paramedic position, we have the on-call paramedic position. That would be able to do inter-facility transports from Hood River to Portland or back and forth and allow for the chief to still remain in city to provide city services, three-to-one ratios. Get three dollars for one dollar spent. Councilmember Cramlett was fully behind that project. Also, the complete partnership of Hood River to establish the internship program. This would also provide necessary coverage and a means to help recruit and keep people here in Cascade Locks to provide services. These two items will substantially impact, having these two items will substantially impact the chief's ability to manage the department, properly stay on top of items of maintenance, volunteer recruitment, record-keeping, training, and yes, billing. In addition to these two programs, with the existing chief paramedic call responses would bring total revenue after non-collectibles from billing to approximately $150,000 per year. The proposed budget, 2011-12 budget, shows revenue after non-collectibles to be $43,570. This proposal that we talked about would triple the numbers. Amend the charter to allow the city to increase fees in accordance with the associated costs of market pricing. Currently, the city's ambulance fees are way below the market cost. And we are losing money anywhere between $20,000 and $50,000 a year because the fee system is out of date and we are unable to upgrade those fees as needed. With the new revenue source, you can restore the funding to the volunteer contract, all the items necessary to run a professional fire EMS department. For example, the current budget cuts drugs and ambulance supplies by almost a quarter. This is unacceptable and places our city under great risk and liabilities. With these actions, the city does not need a fire district or new source of funding in the short or midterm. We can operate properly without any additional burden on the taxpayer. But again, these plans rely upon proper resourcing this department. Favor to do so result in the slow, if not rapid, decline of this essential service. Other proposed changes to the fund plan is to remove, take down the contingency fund to $10,000 from $24,000 in capital issues. This goes to the call of wanting to pay back the loans on the outstanding debt. With a $450,000 inter-fund loan from City Light, sell the properties of the old fire station, pay off the debt. Do this in a patient manner. As a slowly improving economy will only result in a higher proceeds for the sale. The city has the time to do this. There's no reason to hold a frantic sale and take a huge hit on the asset. Indeed, this would be very irresponsible given the public asset. Until you do sell the property, simple budget for the interest. The city has over 12 years to sell this property. And in November 2010, it had two buyers willing to spend over $450,000 for those properties with a city-managed finance plan. Close the deals on those and you will have $46,000 a year for the general fund and fire department that the city feels warranted. With a $25,000 inter-fund loan from Fire Engine, I agree with the proposed payment plan. This is in the best interest of our community. Please look at this as a budget option. It was slow, I was fast. Kathy has the whole item there for review for the council. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm Debbie Fine. And about three weeks ago, I had the unfortunate thing of having to call an ambulance to take me to the hospital for a heart problem. And since our fire chief is, I guess I'm not on duty, I had to be transported to Wyatt and then wait there until an ambulance came from Hood River so they could do the ID and all of that stuff. So I spent 20 minutes at Wyatt waiting for the Hood River ambulance. I don't know exactly just how you care about your family and the dire need for emergency service, but I know how I feel about myself. I was a little concerned that they had to come, you know, so I could get to the hospital to have all this treatment. But anyway, I just feel like the fire department is an essential thing for our community and our tourists. I mean, they come here and have to wait at Wyatt to get transported to Hood River. I just think that's foolish. That's my opinion.
Hi, my name is Sarah Knightman. I'm a citizen here of Cascade Locks. I'm not feeling real good about it. This will probably be my last council meeting because I really am giving the message that my opinion is not considered valued or cared about. Or the public's. We've asked for a town hall meeting. We've asked for information from the staff. And by the count, the majority of this council's actions, not all the council, it's been made abundantly clear of what, whose opinion does count. The Budget Committee sent a very clear message to the volunteers. You're not valued. We don't need to pay for your services. We don't need to support you. This is a group of people that treacherous, and I've been with them for four years, treaching through the snow, collecting food. How many people know people that benefited from the food basket giveaway? They raised their own money to fundraisers to buy what some people call a television. It's a monitor for training purpose, $300. But that's going around town that it was a $3,000 waste of money. So let's not fund the volunteers. First, council says recruit and retain volunteers. And now you're sending a clear message. We don't need you. We don't need the paid fire staff. Let's go back to the good old days. But we don't need volunteers either. It's sad. It's sad and it disheartens me. It makes me feel like that there's only a few voices that are important. I read two recent editorials in the paper from Gary Monkoff and Darlene Sillinger that kind of spelled out what the problem is or has been or how it came about. There's no way to move forward. So for the rest of us that have an opinion, we might as well just stay home. And that's real sad. And I want to say something about Jesse Harvey, who had never had the experience of speaking to council, who came here to state her opinion and was humiliated and embarrassed. And that's not the message that our mayor gave us when he came into office. He posted a letter around town saying, "Our door is open. I want to hear your opinion. I want you to come to council." Those were just empty words.
Go ahead.
Tina Tramone, Cascade Locks. I have to agree with the speaker. I'm coming into this late, but I'm a class learner. And I agree with everyone she just said. I'm concerned about this issue with the fire EMS and the large budget cut because any matters and issues regarding public health and safety that affect the citizens of this community are a public concern. And I would think there would have been a more proactive effort to inform the community about this very important issue. I just found out a week and a half ago. I mean like crazy to find out what's been going on. And I just think that the bare minimum requirements of posting, whatever your bare minimum requirements are for posting notices of what's going on is insufficient. When something like this is such a public concern, I believe there should have been more effort to inform other people who don't come to the meetings, who don't watch the channel, who don't come and get the minutes. Me, I just read the newsletter. I would have thought something was in there that the Locks tender. And there was nothing in there. So I'm disappointed in that. Regarding the 31 salary cut paid to the fire chief position, I question this large amount because looking at your employee personnel handbook, you have a salary range code that you specify for all the employees. And this 31 cut appears to be outside the limit set. And I think that's something that the council needs to investigate further. Whether it's 100 percent hours or three-quarter percent hours, both of them are outside a range that he might be in. And I had to work backwards because I asked for a lot of, I did a couple of records requests and there's a lot of records I asked for. And there's information that should be there that's not there. And, but if you look at the current salary and you work backwards, you can estimate a range where he should be. And since he's not contract and I'm guessing not union, he should be on there with everybody else. He should have a code modified to him. And if you take that salary that he had on the budget before the cut and work backwards and pick a range where the lowest he can be up on high, then that 31 percent is breaking that policy. I think the council needs to investigate further before they do this. They could be breaking their own laws. In addition, there might be labor law violations going on. Since this is a fire and emergencies department and it affects us as a community in public health and safety, if you do anything to his wages or hours or you eliminate that position, if you want to go back to volunteer, you have a paid staff person right now. And if you do anything to those three items, he could actually be a protected class according to the Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industries. And you could, I would think that if it were me, I don't know what this person plans, you could have future lawsuits on your hands that are going to cost you way more than this $26,000 that you're so worried about. I'm totally against you eliminating his position. In addition, I keep hearing excessive expenses, excessive expenses to that department. But I requested a copy of the preliminary latest financials through April. And his revenues exceed the expenses for that fire and emergencies department by like $6,500, $6,600. In addition, he has 116,000 accounts receivable. That department's doing good. And what you're doing with that budget is just, it doesn't make sense. A person looking at the numbers and looking at what's really going on and doing their own investigation instead of just taking everything that's being said as absolute, I'm finding more things that weren't presented. And I think that this is a premature, not immature, premature decision that you're making on this 31 percent cut. And I think there's, rather, in addition to the policy violation, possible policy violation in labor law, there could be other things, consequences, that you're not even contemplating that are going to come back because of this action, if you take this action. If it were me, I looked at the budget. And I noticed the museum and the recreation department are constant deficits. They hardly have any revenue. In fact, the city had to give the recreation department $2,000. And then the budget committee increased the expenses $2,000. As a citizen, yes, the museum's important, but it's not more important than an emergency and fire department. I would prefer to close the museum down temporarily, keep our fire and emergency services. And you cut back on the recreation temporarily, keep the emergency and fire services and do something about those other two. And then let the fire department grow and make its money because that project, anything costs more money in the beginning when you have a project. You're going to spend more money. The P&Ls, the latest ones, look really good. I think this is a premature decision that you're making. And I have to say, for everything that this person's done to us, for us, for this community, brought us out of the dark ages and up to code, the treatment he's getting, I'm really appalled. That one, I'm sorry to say.
Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Well, I'll start, Cascade Locks. As some of you might recall, for those of you who weren't here, back in approximately '03, Hood River came down here and they wanted to form a joint fire department. Reason they wanted to do that was because it appeared there was going to be a casino on the horizon here and they could benefit from that. They brought down the trailer that you see behind the old firehouse. They were going to give us 24-by-7 coverage at that time. Unfortunately, there was a problem between leadership in Hood River and our volunteers. And our volunteers started leaving. Hood River had to bring in a second person. So their costs skyrocketed. And they pulled out, leaving us in a world of hurt. At that time, Bob Willoughby, who was the CA in those days, went out and found Jeff Pritchard, who was hired on as a paramedic. And he acted as paramedic for about six months, I believe it was, and was eventually promoted to chief. Now, since that time, if you look, you will see that under his leadership, a new building has been built because the old one would hardly allow you to put the machinery in it. You had to pull the mirrors back just to back into the stalls. Stalls weren't really deep enough. So with a lot of work, most of the money was raised through grants, through the sale of some property. And there was a balance left over. That balance is really a capital expenditure and should be treated as such. And this council here has sat here and told us time in and time out that they could only finance that for five years, three years, if it was up. Up until about a month ago. And suddenly, it was realized that it could be financed for 10 years, even though you've been hearing about it from various members of the public for quite a while. So you have one option there. You can finance that for 10 years and you can lease that property out. You can wait until property values go up, which they inevitably will, and then sell that building. Another option is you can issue bonds and you can issue them at a very low rate right now. And you could take it out 20 or 25 years if you so desired because you have a building over there that you can do it against. And your payments could be negligible. And again, you could sell this other building when property values go up. There's really no reason to go around and say that this city is a half a million dollars in the hole when there's an asset sitting up here that's worth somewhere between $210,000 and $250,000. And you could raise, you could raise the rest with bonds or you can go out and you can borrow from a fund, one of your funds, for 10 years. You've heard another lady speak about how money is coming into the fire department. And actually, almost any town I've ever been to, the ambulance department makes money. Fire departments never make money. They're not expected to. They're just a cost that the city bears to protect its citizens. I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else who cares to speak?
Rob Rank, Cascade Locks. I had a lot of very plausible scenarios to give you about ways that you could fund the fire department, ways that this budget could be altered. But in retrospect, I think it's a little bit pointless. If you had actually wanted to hear our plausible suggestions and actually wanted to solve this budget and do something that was viable, you would have had the town hall meeting that the council voted on. You would have, you would think that if we wanted a town hall meeting and there were much more, many more people here that night than there are tonight, that made quite clear what we wanted. And for some reason, that town hall meeting never happened. And you would think that if we're talking about the fire department and a town hall meeting was going to happen, that you would have done that before you finalized the budget because you essentially are tying your hands by approving a budget that is neither viable, it is ill-fated, and it's doomed to failure. It is a lot of things that could be done differently. You have diverted responsibilities from tourism and put more responsibilities on the general fund. With Flowers' contract, that is money that could be used to fund the fire department. I'm going to talk to you about the responsibility that you have to protect this community. You will be culpable for the consequences of what will happen when you underutilized a position, that somebody resigns. I don't think you've calculated in the budget $17,000 that you're going to owe the fire chief for that cop time, the loss of revenue that will happen. You have underfunded the position. You won't be able to replace that position. I actually had a conversation with the city manager of Hood River on Tuesday, Bob Francis. And he was concerned about what he's heard happening through the Hood River news about our fire and EMS services. And so I filled him in a little bit. And he said that this will, if we lose our fire department, this will adversely impact our mutual aid agreement. And they will not serve this community without sending a bill to the city. That without a mutual aid agreement, they have no responsibility to cover us. And I'm sorry, but I think that's what's going to happen. And you will be personally liable. This is malfeasance. You know what the logical consequences are to underfunding a position and taking away the contract with the volunteers? So I'm not going to try to tell you how you should solve this budget problem. But you need to, you need to think long and hard before you make a decision. Before you do what you purposed in your heart to do because it's very clear what your intentions were. And if you do it, things are going to happen. Thank you.
Would anyone else from the public care to speak? You already spoke. You just spoke. Would someone else who hasn't spoke Would someone else who hasn't spoken care to speak again, please? If there's no one else, we will close the public hearing and move on. Next is presentations. We have none tonight. Then there's comments by the general public on any item of interest not going to be discussed on the agenda tonight. Committee reports, government officials. Okay. Is there anyone that has, from the public, that has anything they would like to talk about? That's not on the agenda?
I'd raise my hand first.
Okay, go ahead.
I didn't know how to divide up my comments. Sarah and I, Cascade Locks. I'm really, really concerned about how we're going to replace our city administrator, our attorney, our fire chief, given the way that the council has taken away responsibility. When, when you run a business, you hire people that have the education and the expertise to do that job. And you take guidance from them, especially the city council. City council doesn't decide what bills to pay. They don't hire a fire. They hire somebody that's educated, human resources, city management. And having city administrators watch what's going on here and seeing how their hands will be tied and that every single decision that they make has to come before council instead of the other way around is going to be very difficult to fill. I, I feel such doom and gloom for this city when before all I felt was such a sense of community and terrorism and, and a really nice little place to live. And, and it's, and I just have to say it one last time because I'm really feeling disillusioned. I'm feeling disenfranchised. And I, and I really have these deep concerns. I really strongly urge you, when you hire your next city attorney, your next city administrator, that you hire somebody and give them, untie their hands and give them the ability to give you the guidance that you need. And unless where you go back to college and learn how to do it yourself.
Jeff Hope, Cascade Locks. Last week, I had asked to see if our RFP request proposal, or i.e. a competitive, competitive bid process, was ever issued for items that the tourism committee has purchased, i.e. advertising. Staff indicated that no RFP was ever published or awarded. For fiscal year 2009, 2010, which would be March '09 to September of 2010, seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars has been paid to a company made by the name of Pacific Crest Imprints. For 2011, five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars has been paid to this company. Resolution 1043 explains that the local contract review process addresses the RFP process, does, does not, an RFP does not need to be posted or asked for if the purchase is under five thousand dollars. It is clear that a purchase for 2011 is over that amount. It is quite clear that the budget year 2009, 2010 is outside of that resolution. If one were to look at the purchases for '09, '10 fiscal year, they are under the amount for one-time purchase amount of the bill. But if you look at it as a whole, they're more than the single purchase amount, the seventeen thousand dollars I addressed earlier. For fiscal year 2011, you look, it looks the same. However, it appears, if one were to look at it, it appears that this was done with the purpose to circumvent the RFP process and the resolution. I would ask council to direct staff to inquire why an RFP was not asked for and was never awarded, or why an RFP was never asked for and why a Pacific Crest Imprints was awarded to the city's business for the amounts that it discussed. Thank you.
Does anyone else from the public have a comment they'd like to state? Seeing none, we will proceed on to discussions, declaration of potential conflicts of interest. Seeing none, we will go on to consent, consent agenda. Consent agenda may be approved in its entirety in a single motion. Items are considered to be routine. Any counselor may make a motion to remove any item from the consent agenda for individual discussion. IMA, approval of minutes of the June thirteenth, 2011 council meeting. Item B, approval of minutes of the June fifteenth, 2011 special council meeting. And C, ratification of bills in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and seven cents. Is there any comments? Don?
On the minutes, June thirteenth, I'd just like to clarify a comment just for the record. Mr. Brostoff said that he had heard that three thousand dollars was spent on gas by CGRA. He said the three thousand was given to them by tourist committee. That money was not, did not come from tourism. The sailors pay for their gas. They pay for the motels. They pay for the food. They don't, tourism doesn't pay for gas and things like that.
So your wife made that comment, Don. She said two thousand dollars. Did you send it down to, down to your potluck?
Hold it. Tourism did not pay it, that's what I said. The sailors paid for it. Came out of the sailors' money. I know because I bought it.
Yes, I know you did. I didn't say that. I said that they gave the sailors three thousand.
No, they didn't give them. I just said they didn't.
Order, order. There's not supposed to be a discussion back and forth.
I'm just stating, that is not tourist money. The sailors, the college fund, paid the three thousand dollars. Tourism did not.
Don, please, I want to speak to you, Don. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Pardon?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So again, we have more volunteers from the fire department, EMS department. And last time we did ratify those bills, did you want to explain?
Well, I included a memo about the ratification process. And basically, it's, it's basically advisory, it's a formality, if they're already paid.
So does it give, there's a bit of responsibility on any person's shoulders because that department is already over budget and we're still paying bills out?
Yeah, it puts it on me. If it's up to twenty-five hundred dollars, if it's over twenty-five hundred, it puts it on you in terms of signing off on it. So I review the bills myself.
And these are all bills that needed to be, that were?
Yeah, yeah. And I will throw them and determine if they need to be paid or not.
Is there any further discussion? Questions? Tom?
A question on those bills. I know we have money coming in, emergency services. Was there enough money in the coffers to pay those bills? Are we still, probably still, whatever?
In terms of?
I guess we're in the hole, internal labor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don?
Didn't we get the money from Hood River yet?
No. And I've called them a couple of times.
Thanks. Lance?
Mr. Carson, with, with regard to the bills, is, you might understand that cities pay enough money, they don't have, we don't have. Is that, is that what you just said? Or, okay, could you clarify that? Because it sounded like you said we're, we're in the hole.
The funds, the fund itself is running a deficit. It's been running a deficit for a couple of years. There is more than adequate money in, in the city pool of funds to pay the bills right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, items A, B, and C? Am I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes. Next is unfinished business. Staff report, public comment, council action. Approval ordinance number four-one-three, providing for transient room assessment for the city of Cascade Locks. Providing administrative procedures for collection of the same established violations and penalties thereof, and repealing ordinance number three-twenty. Richard?
Okay, this is a second reading. It was here before your last time. Essentially, we changed, we, we added, or took away the exemption, but we added vacation homes to the tax. And then there were some minor tax changes that we, you know, we, after looking at other ordinances, so that's it.
Questions? Fellow comment? Does anyone have a?
Okay, I promise this to my husband. Sarah and I, Cascade Locks. I have a real issue with the transient room tax, not adding the vacation homes. I'm all good with that. But there has not been an audit that I personally am aware of for at least seven years, Mary.
We are currently in the audit process right now.
So they are being audited?
We have done three motels at this time.
Okay. Until, because I know the auditor said that we have to have an audit. And I know that I think that's important, that the staff have enough time to do that before they add on one. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Rob Rank, Cascade Locks. Was there ever attorney's review done on this? I made a comment at the last council meeting that, at that time, there was no attorney review. And I'm sorry, but this violates the 2008 tax initiative. This is a new tax. Single-family dwellings were never taxed before. And at that time, Councilman Benson kind of said, yeah. He didn't know, but he thought it probably did. So did staff ever check with the attorney to find out if you're violating your own tax initiative, which violates your charter? I would think that would have been an important thing to do, given that somebody already commented on it and said, you need to have the attorney look at it. This is a, kind of a new thing for the council. They are now routinely passing ordinances without attorney review. I think this is the third ordinance that's been passed in six months with no attorney review. This is not something that was done previous to this. So what happened to this, we're always going to do what's right and we're always going to do what's best for the community. How can you do that without having legal review? Thank you. I'm just going to ask, you already asked.
Would anyone else from the public have a comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment and move to council's action. Okay? Does any council have a question? Tiffany?
Has this been looked at by the attorney?
I talked to the attorney about it. I don't remember if that specific issue came up or not in terms of it being a new fee.
Personally, I don't feel that it's a new fee, but I would regret to have attorney review of it.
Sure. Lance?
I would move that we table this until it's been reviewed and we go answer that question.
What did you second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table this until we get an answer. So, Richard, you'll check into this, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Unless there's any further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, that was, I'd like to look at the, what the cost is going to be to the city to pass this ordinance. Because if it does require an election, or is it an election that we'd have to pay for and so on? And I'd like that examined as part of the review process. I just wanted to add that as, as part of discussion.
Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor of tabling this issue until we get an answer back from Richard and the attorney? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been tabled. Okay, next is item B, city administrator recruitment process. First is staff report. Richard?
Okay, in your packet is the schedule that I put back, put together some time ago. We received twenty-four applicants from around the country. I sifted it down to six people who, by virtue of experience and education, were kind of at the top of the list. What we, what you need to do now is figure out who's going to interview them, who's going to select them, and when.
Public comment? Would anyone from the public care to speak on this matter?
I just request that you do listen to your community and potentially have the community involved in selecting the next city administrator rather than just isolating a few members on the city council. Thank you.
Richard first.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I have. No, we got a finished public comment and then we can have a discussion.
I'm ready to put her in.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say, I agree with the last person. I didn't know we had that option. I think there's an imbalance of checks and balances here and separation of powers. And if we can do that, get somebody else involved in the process, that would be great rather than excluding all of us.
Jeff Hope, Cascade Locks. From when they last, when the city last hired temporary administrator, new person, it was interesting watching that on Channel 23, whereas one person would be asked a question in a roundtable form from there, came up with, where you'd ask a question and another person would already be able to formulate their answer as the first question is being asked, the speaker got a chance to speak and the other person's waiting for the question, that same question to be asked. It would ask that, that process, I don't think is productive or does it give, gives it this, it gives an unfair advantage to people that are being asked questions ahead of time? Another person can listen to that question, formulate a better answer, or compound upon, upon the original answer that was given by one administrator. I think a better process would be individual interview, where you'd have your city administrator selecting or your applicant, if you will. So in the middle right here, you have your series of questions being asked while your applicants are outside in the hallway waiting to be asked, and not have an unfair advantage of knowing the questions ahead of time or allowing your applicants to have the six questions or four questions or whatever it is ahead of time, ten minutes before they're supposed to come in and talk, and they talk about it. The roundtable or the shy effect, that was, that was not, it's quite key words to watch, at least. I don't think it was a fair process or professional. Next.
I'm Joanne Wittenberg. The, the last time we hired a city administrator, I was on, part of the committee because I was the chairman at that time of the planning commission. And that was a full day's process with three candidates, almost a full day's process. And I'm not sure how many of you were part of that, I think some of you were. But the city council spent forty minutes with the candidate. This other committee, which comprised of Bob Francis, Dave Meriwether, you know, the chairman of the, of the county, Bob Francis is the city manager and the city of Hood River. There were a couple of other people from up there. Chuck from the court was there. I was there from the planning commission. And I think there was one or two other citizens from Cascade Locks that were on that committee. So as the city council was interviewing a candidate for forty minutes, this other committee was interviewing another candidate for forty minutes, and the planning director was taking the third candidate out around town, showing them what the city looked like. Because there were some candidates, well, all three candidates had never lived here. And showed them where, you know, the casino might possibly be. It was kind of a thumbnail sketch. So it took like three hours, forty minutes for each candidate. So that's almost something out. And then our committee was in the library. And we had a sheet, a sheet that we had graded people. And we, and we discussed. And as a committee, we made our recommendations to the city council. And the city council was still in session, only not this building. And it all happened, I think, on Saturday, but it really took most of a day. And I think you should kind of look at some kind of questions to ask each candidate so it's not so subjective but more objective. And, and kind of think about what, how you want to proceed. But I think that was a real thorough process of hiring a city administrator. And ultimately, the decision came down from the city council, but with input from other people. In prior years, because we've lived here a good long time, there's been some kind of open, I remember one year we had kind of a coffee and cake kind of thing down in the basement of the community church where all three candidates were down there with their wives. And people came in and met and pummeled and kind of got an idea of, you know, who they were. And this was before anybody was hired. All three candidates were in that room. So it was kind of a social time. So you've got to feel for the candidate, people. And then could go and talk to their city council person about who they liked, those people. But I think it's real important that you have an objective list of questions to ask each candidate and so that each candidate has a fair chance. But it's, is a long process because you want to get the best person. So kind of a day. Thanks.
Would anyone else from the public care to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will go on to...
You've got to decide.
Pardon?
Well, I just, I wanted to respond to you. I mean, I'm sorry, Sean. The, there is a community meeting scheduled on here. So we are going to do that. And I wanted to respond to your comment, which you asked the same question. It's kind of like, can you top this? Oh, no, I mean, that's what, that's what happens. You gotta, you gotta sound smarter than the last person or you look like an idiot, so.
Yeah, Don?
I noticed the applicants we have so far, most all of them are quite a ways away.
Two are... Uh, two are actually, uh, from Oregon. And the other... One is, uh, has lived here, is currently in Alaska, and the other three are on the east coast. So, it, one way to do this would be, is kind of a preliminary step, would be to do either in-person if they wanna come here or, uh, using Skype or by telephone to narrow the list down and then have, let me be, say, three people. Then have them come here for the community meeting and, uh, you know, and spend the day and talk to people and that kind of thing. But it might be good to narrow it down to, from six to three before you put, you know, then it's up to them if they wanna come all the way out here.
Okay. Lance?
Uh, I like your idea. I like some of the other ideas that have been suggested. Um, cause it seems, seems cumbersome to do a, a day-long interview process for six people. Um, particularly if there's travel involved and it's, according to the schedule that you presented to us, um, they might have to come back for a second round of interviews, uh, or at least a community meeting. Uh, if there's, if there's travel there. Um, so I like the concept, the idea of narrowing it. I'm just curious what your, it looks like we're a little off schedule. Based on schedule. But I'm just curious, I mean, so there's that to deal with, but then I'm also curious about what your, what your process, what you're proposing to us for, for this process is, cause it says, um, interviews scheduled, uh, held and finalists selected by council. Um, so that raises, I mean, I like that idea. I think the council should be selecting the, the finalists, but, or we have a public meeting to do that? In which cases, it's, because if, if council's gonna be interviewing and selecting, that means, you know, everyone's here, seven people in the room and then, um, that's a public meeting, it has to be noticed. Um, there's certain requirements there.
Well, given that it's a personnel matter, you might wanna do it in, in executive session if you're down to three people.
If, to get it down to three people, is that what you're saying?
No, if it's down to three people, you've had a community meeting, uh, you know, you've had it come here and go through some, you know, rigorous subjective questioning. But I would think that the council would wanna make that decision probably in executive session, cause it's a personnel matter.
Yeah, that's, that's crossed my mind. I guess, but I'm, I'm actually back a step or two.
Sure.
Uh, what's, what's listed is June twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I think...
On here, interviews scheduled and held, I think at that point, according to this process, we're still at six candidates.
Yes.
And at the end of that process, we're narrowing it to three.
Right.
So, that's kinda what I'm asking about. Is that, is that gonna be done? I mean, are you proposing that that be done in a public meeting? Are you proposing that that be done in an executive session?
Well, I think the interviews for the, the six could be a public meeting, yeah. I don't, you, you can structure it just the way you want, but I mean, I think...
Well, I'm asking what you're proposing.
What we need to do is, you know, interview whoever does it, when you, when you wanna do it, interview the six. If they're here, fine. If they have to do it by phone or Skype, that's fine. But you gotta pick a date and you gotta decide who's, who's gonna do the interview. Who, who is gonna be involved in doing that interview process? Cause it will, e- even if you're doing it, you know, if you wanna narrow it down to three and then bring them in and have a community meeting and have it more, something more involved, you still, you're gonna need a half a day to do this or more to get through six people. So, I need to, uh, know who's gonna do it and when you're, when you're gonna do it, so we can get ready.
So, you're not proposing any particular format?
Mm-hmm. Other than, other than interviewing the six by phone or in-person with some, you know, some standardized questions so you can get some sense of what they are, what they are like as people.
Eva?
Um, I have an idea. Um, I was reading through some, you know, the re, I was reading through the resumes and I, I saw on some there that they said, you know, well, with cities maybe that they hadn't, um, stated before, that they didn't feel that they were adequately filled in, kind of with what our needs or our city are. So, and we also did this in my placement employment. We had a lot of people that were coming in that didn't really understand what our job is about. And so, we did a little presentation, we put together a little PowerPoint, I mean, that's just a, just what we did. And, uh, so, I like the idea of giving them an idea of what our city's about, but not only that, but what are some of the challenges that are coming up? You know, right off the get-go, kinda what their challenges are, what our goals are, what we're looking for. And then, I like the idea of having, um, like, maybe like a Skype thing since we have people that are from out of the state and have a committee that has, um, some people out of the public and that also has us. Now, I don't know whether we wanna have the whole council and that or whether you wanna have a smaller group of people, that maybe one or two council members, people out of the community, shoot, you can pick from anywhere, you know? You can go Bob Francis, you can go whatever, you know, whoever you think that would have some, uh, would be good for that position. And then, take those, you know, six people down to your two or three. So, there's a couple options. You could use the council for that or you could wait and then let the floor of the situation of the council happen after that process, after everybody recommends to the council, these are the two or three people that we think are viable, that we really wanna look into. Then you could have the people come in, do a community thing on a Friday night or something like that and then do your stuff on Saturday, get them in and out. I don't, that's just a rough draft of something, but using kind of leaning rather than, and giving people input. Giving the public input.
Don? You had your end up, or...
No, I was just, does the city pay the transportation for...
No.
You know, I, I, we would probably have to find out how, how many of the, how many of the out of, out of statements are willing to tell comfort in interviews?
Well, but that's why I was suggesting that, that the first step would be you do, if they wanna come here, fine. If they, you know, because it is costly. So, you could do it by phone or by Skype to narrow it down to three. Then if you're down, if you're, you know, if you're in the final three, then you gotta make a decision if you wanna pay.
Yeah.
Tiffany?
I mean, um, I, I like what you have to say, but, uh, that being said, we have to notice two weeks. So, I think it would be prudent for us now to notice for the final three, that, you know, when we whittle it down to three people, I think we should be, we should be advertising now for people interested in being on a committee to interview the final three candidates cause we do have to do it two weeks with a committee that's set up by the mayor. And, um, work on the six and decide where we wanna go from there. We just, we're really constrained by time. I mean, we're down to the last month here. Two, two weeks is gonna put us, in the middle of July, for having a committee in place to do the final interviews for the three candidates and make recommendations to the council. Um, so, I just, I think we need to crack the whip.
Lance was next.
Okay, first of all, I apologize for not talking about, talking about this to you ahead of time. But for Mary Ann, um, you're our human resources person. Do you have a recommendation for a process that we should use to, to make the selection? First from six and then down to three?
I've never gone through this big of a process. Um, I've gone through the process of hiring employees, but never this magnitude, so I do not...
Okay. Um, as a follow-up to that, then I think we need to have a recommendation, uh, from staff rather than us just sort of, you know, look around, pull some ideas. I think that's, that's appropriate. So, I would ask that, um, we either authorize, um, Mary Ann and Richard to set up a process for us, a specific process, or that we table this until they can come back and recommend the process.
I like this time to table it, uh, given that you meet in two weeks.
I'd like to speak. I, I think at this point in time, I, I think it would be quite prudent for the council to, uh, and we could go into executive session and discuss it, but I think that we should at least get down to the final three and then we can have the final three and then we can go through doing the, uh, scheduled interview, having the public involved, getting people to be on that committee, to be involved with the, the final selection of who, who's actually gonna be hired. But I think we need to get to that next step, so that we can actually do that work. I think Don was next.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know how the other members of the council feel, but I personally don't think it'll be too hard to get to the three from what I've been able to read. And, and then we can, we can all make some telephone calls too, to review some of the, that I...
Okay.
I think we should go into executive session.
Richard?
Well, uh, I think that'd be good. I think to get from six to three to do the, the initial interviews, I think, you know, you should do it. You need to pick a day that you wanna do it, the interviews, the first six. Then, in the meantime, Mary Ann and I can work, uh, now that the budget's almost over, uh, can work out a more elaborate process in terms of, uh, who will interview the final three, have the, you know, the, the community meeting and run that by you. But what I, what I really need is, is a date and a block of time set aside that you'll talk to the first six. And that would need to be at least, at least a half a day, I mean, even if you spent thirty minutes talking to each one of them.
So, my question to the committee would be, or the council would be, uh, when is there another date that's a viable date for all this to get together to go through the six and make phone calls or come to a conclusion on who the final three's gonna be? Lance?
Are you, okay, just wanted to clarify. Are you asking about conducting interviews, a date to conduct interviews? Or are you talking about a date to discuss the applications?
Date to do interviews. That's the next step.
I was just, yeah, you know what you're talking about, George?
Well, that's not what I was getting at. I was getting at, we have to get down to the final three and then I think the final three are gonna be the ones that are gonna be interviewed. That's my thought. Cause if we, unless you wanna try to have interviews for six, the council to do that, I mean, what's, what's your feeling? Do you wanna interview six or you wanna interview three?
Uh, I like the idea that Joanne talked about of having, uh, a rotating interview where we can, we can, uh, put together a committee of our, our regional partners, um, like the, um, board manager, the county manager and, uh, and, and people like that who have experience and knowledge about, um, government, management of government, um, as well as a city council interview, uh, as well as the, uh, the tour of town. And then follow that up with a community meeting. I like that idea as an interview process. And I also agree that it, it actually works better, um, with a smaller number, if we narrow it down. Uh, the way I understood is Mr. Carson suggesting that we do either phone, um, some sort of a computer, computerized interview, uh, or an in-person, depending on availability, prior to that to help us, um, eliminate three people from the list and, and choose the top three. Um, and I understood you to suggest that the council go into executive session, perhaps even tonight, to just look over the applications and do that, narrow it down without actually talking to those people. And I just wanted, am I, am I understanding you right?
No, not entirely, because what I was trying to say is we need to get to the three, okay? And if we're gonna get to the three, that, I understand that the three need to go through. It's a good idea to go through and have people within the public and have, and do like what Joanne said. I, I, I agree with that. That's not a bad premise, okay? But the point that I was trying to get at is, when are we gonna have a meeting to where we can tell these six people that we're gonna sit down in the executive session and go through interviews with them? And that's when I asked everybody, when is the next soonest possible date that we can all get together to do this? That was what my intention is. Yes, Don?
I would prefer doing like, I think I understand your saying. I, from, from reading the, what I get, I assume maybe you have, I don't think it'll be real hard to get to the three. Maybe I'm wrong. I think we could do it in executive session, cause if we go through six through a public meeting, we're gonna be a long time getting to our three, I think. I, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
Okay. Any other council member have a... Tom?
Well, I'm, I'm good either way on it, but I, I believe it's important to get down to the three. Um, they've all given us their resumes and they're pretty, pretty extensive resumes. They tell us their thoughts on why they wanna be here, um, their background. And so, that, that is pretty extensive in here right now that we've gotten from, from the people. So, same thing, what, I've, they've already applied. You know, we're not on a timeline. I don't wanna keep them hanging around here forever while, while we go through a real long process ourselves. If we're gonna have the, um, the interview of six, fine with. Then we need to hurry up and come up with what's the, what the questions are gonna be, how, how that's gonna be conducted. So, I don't mind doing that and doing that, doing that fairly quick. But in doing that, we need to already, you know, we need to get the staff to say, or whoever's gonna come up with, with that, how that inter, how that interview process is going. So, I'm, I'm fine with the six, but I wanna keep the thing moving on, cause I don't wanna keep these guys hanging around. You're gonna lose them if you, if you draw this thing out too long.
Right. Tiffany?
Rich?
Well, okay, one way you could do it, if you have all their resumes, they've answered all the, the supplemental questions. They have their covered letters, everything else. I mean, basically, you could just pick the three in a, in an executive session. We'll notice out two weeks and we'll set the schedule up around that, that date in terms of a public meeting and the community meeting and the, the different groups. I can work on that fairly straight away.
Okay.
Tiffany?
Okay, so what I think we should do, um, we should each send in, uh, a few questions to, maybe Richard to put together for interview questions like we did for the interns, city administrator. And I would say that sometime next week after Fourth of July, uh, set a date that we could have an interview process for the six, uh, I don't, maybe on a Wednesday night or something like that, that we could, that we could do that, where we could all participate and then from there, make our decision. We'll already be one week into the notice for the setting up the committee.
Okay, um...
I mean, we just, we need to move.
I know I need to go. Yeah, Lance?
Okay, um, welcome the suggestion for a process, thank you. And, and I just have a different one. And I, but first I wonder, could we do it this week? Is that, is that too short a notice to get to these people?
Do we have interview questions set up?
Well, I've got, I just wanna get one question answered at a time.
Um, it, I don't think we could get to them this week.
You, you're so, so no for this week?
Yeah.
So, you're looking at it next week?
I mean, I could try, but I, I would rather have a week out, like, like she said, maybe a Wednesday.
It's not all the way to...
Yeah. A lot of people, yeah, a lot of people are gonna leave town.
So, so to address the, the question issue, um, I think we've already submitted questions. I think you could, you could go a couple of different ways. You could use the same questions or the staff could use some, some boilerplate questions which are not too hard to, to get to. Um, and we could have the staff generate that list of questions. Uh, I don't, I don't see that we need to send in the same questions we've already sent in, cause it's, it's questions for the same position. And then third, as far as addressing the executive session issue, I, I think the meeting, um, I would like to see the meeting go like this, that we have a, a public meeting that's open, that we conduct the interviews in public, one at a time, rather than all at once. Um, and then have, uh, a section for public comment at the end of those interviews so that the public's, people from the public are interested in listening to all those interviews, um, that they could then comment and share their thoughts on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanna get something clear, cause I, it, it's kinda confusing to me. All right, so, and I don't know if we need to do a show of hands, but are, are we talking about, I guess what we need to narrow this down, are we talking about six candidates? Are we talking about three? Are we talking about three? Okay, all those?
My comments were talking about six. I made three comments, but about that interview with six people.
Just to show hands, all those in favor of six candidates, raise their hands. One, two, three.
Well, six, to interview six candidates.
To interview six candidates. I'm trying to figure out where we're going. Are we going for six candidates or are we only going to, are we going to try to eliminate to three and then go through the process? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think we should go through the six candidates.
Okay, so you think you should go through six?
And narrow it down to three in a week from Wednesday's time or sometime around there and then move on from there and then notice them and see if they can be here in a week's to ten days' time for the committee to have an interview process with the three.
And I can give them a tentative date. I mean, it would be two dates. One would be for the initial interview and I can give them a tentative, if they could get it down, be finalists, they would actually have to be here for, you know, for the tour, for the community, for the interview process. No problem with that.
Okay. One second, Lance. Let me just go through once. So, Don, six final candidates and interviews, like what Tiffany just said?
I would prefer going into the executive session to see if we're thinking about the same three.
Okay.
Personally.
Tom?
I can't, it's going to take a long time to interview six if we really feel that there's some of them that we're not going to be interested in. And there are a couple that I don't think will fit. Maybe I won't, but I don't know.
Tom?
I like the six, but again, I want to say the move fairly. I want it real quick, but I want to move fairly okay for them. Again, looking at all of these things and them answering the questions they answered on air, we really have got, in my opinion, quite a bit of information from them. I have no problem going in and trying to get down to the, everybody's okay. I have no problem getting to the three because I think, I agree that from the information they've given us, I think we can get it down to the three.
And I'd like some time to call the references myself.
Okay. Lance?
Are we just answering this question that you're asking? Okay, so I just, I feel like there's a misunderstanding here. What we're talking about doing next week is not six final interviews. What we're doing, what we're talking about is doing, have the shorter interviews for six people and out of that, generate a list of three finalists who would then be invited to a much larger, broader, community-wide interview process. And I just wanted to clarify that as we go through. I think there's two ideas out here. I think one of them is next Wednesday, Thursday, to have an afternoon-long or evening-long interview session where we ask questions to the six candidates and then generate a list of three finalists. And another idea is to go into an executive session and just do that amongst ourselves in an executive session and then have three finalists coming out of that executive session. And I do want to point out, because obviously I've promoted the idea of having an actual interview with the six candidates, I want to point out that in executive session tonight, my understanding is not possible because it wasn't noticed. So now we're talking about setting up another meeting anyway, just to have an executive session. Now, maybe I'm wrong on that, but I think hopefully you could shed some light on it.
Well, he can, if he calls it, he can say now, we would like to add executive session under whatever. They don't normally advise you to do that. They advise you to at least post it twenty-four hours.
You're talking about the attorney's advice?
And this is, what I was suggesting is pretty much the same. It's a screening, okay? We'll do thirty minutes, maybe even twenty-minute interviews. It will set up just to get through them and then at the end of it, you could have an executive session decide who the three are. And I will have already noticed out two weeks, so we'll already be working on that, that part of the program.
I'm fine with that.
Eva?
Yes.
You good with that? You good with that? You good with that? I'm good with that, so do we need to?
You need a date?
Yeah, I'm the same.
Someone pushing.
No, I asked for that earlier.
I prefer Wednesday.
Yeah, Lance?
Thursday works good for me next week, but Thursday works good for me next week. I believe that's the seventh, but I also wanted to just repeat my request that there be, there would be, because we, actually, people from the public have asked for it in the public comment section of this agenda item. I would prefer that we do have a public comment for anyone that has listened to the interviews and wants to make, wants to share their opinion with us prior to us either going into executive session or having a discussion in open session. I think that's an important part of it.
Okay.
Then you'll need at least four hours. You've got, even if you do twenty minutes each and a break in between and a public comment and the executive session, you know, so what, when would you start? What time?
September on the East Coast.
Four or five. Do the East Coast candidates first.
Five o'clock, yeah.
Five o'clock?
That'd be eight o'clock back east, so.
So starting at four?
Yeah, well, they go to bed at eight. So this is, this is Thursday then?
I would prefer, can we try and figure out what day would work best? Because Thursday night is sailing night.
So like Wednesday at five?
Thursday actually is better for me.
Eva, want to let me know?
I can do either. I'm on vacation next week, so you want to keep time even like.
Tom?
Wednesday on the night, I'll tell you to get back until seven o'clock. The rest of the time, get Wednesday.
Doesn't matter to me. I know. I'm retarded. I regret.
Thursday, the seventh?
Five o'clock here.
Yeah.
It sounds like we're deciding on Thursday the seventh to hold another meeting. And I just wanted to make the comment while we're on this that I would like to see us move forward, perhaps even starting tomorrow, with planning for the next phase of the project. I think we've, well, if Mary Ann and Richard need to have more direction on what that process is, I'm confident that they can, that they've heard comments and can establish a process and recommend it to us at our next meeting. But I think that that needs to start moving forward, especially if it's going to... Oh, sorry. Really apologize for that. But, you know, if we're going to start moving forward, I think we need to, if we're, you know, if we're going to get our regional partners involved in interview process, we need to contact them, let them know some dates as well. So I think that's a process that needs to start.
Richard?
Now that we can, you know, kind of moving beyond the budget, we can shift gears. Yeah, I'll come back to you with a program at that meeting that we'll work it up and we'll give it to you on the seventh. You're all here, you can talk about it.
Four hour, four and a half hours.
That's up to you.
So are we going to use the same questions that we used to interview?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Lance?
Yeah, those questions are going to take us longer than twenty minutes. And for that reason, I suggest that the staff set up a set of questions that are designed to last for twenty minutes.
Sure.
Some of those might combine.
Yeah, I'll narrow it down.
Do you remember all those questions?
Yeah.
It's all blurred.
The questions? I think so. I'll have to look for them. They don't have to use them all. They can pick out whichever ones they want to use.
And so also, sorry, also in this process, we also need to set up a committee. What do you want it to be? Do you want it to be all public? Or do you want it to be part public, part counselors? What, how do you?
Well, ideally, I think it should be a mix.
For the final, for the final group, three.
I like the idea, once it gets down to three, you could have three groups. One is kind of the professional bureaucrat group, like Francis and others. One is kind of the council group and another would be a community group. And they could just, the three could rotate. You could do all the interviews, you know, pretty quickly.
Okay, so you need to declare what that would be and then how many people you would be looking for and advertise it immediately. So can we?
Well, let's have some comment on what people think as far as what, you know. Ideally, I would think that probably five people would be a good group. So I'll be two council members and...
Well, he just said though, okay, no, wait, let's back up. Are we going to go, are we going to go three different committees? One, a public group, one, the planning, the planning commissioners and one, the council?
Well, we're still, what I'm suggesting is for the six, it's just the council.
Right, that, no, we're beyond the six now. We're down to the three.
You get to the final three, there would be a professional group, like Francis and looks like that all set up. You know, then it depends. You could have the professional group, the community group and the council, all three separate. Or you could combine the council with, you know, it's whatever you want and how many groups you want. I don't think you need more than three groups.
Okay. Lance?
I just wanted to throw my two cents in, if I haven't said it already, on establishing those three groups. I like the idea of a committee of regional partners, of experts in government management.
Right.
And I think it's, we've discussed enough with those people. And I trust the staff to form that committee. I think a city council group, which again would be a public meeting, but it would include the whole city council. And I like the idea of a group that gives a tour of town. I also think it's important that they include some of our city staff in that group as well as citizens. I think that staff would be the choice to lead a tour of town. But I think that community members should be, should be involved in that group as well. Select the community members, so I think that then there has to be some time for those three groups to get together and share their thoughts. And then, you know, I think we also discussed having a community forum, which is the one we've been agreed towards the end of that day. That process, I mean, I think that reflects what Joanne was saying. And I think it involves a lot of the stakeholders in the community. Citizens, anyone who could attend public meetings as well as a community forum. Staff really need to have some input. And we've got some regional experts on government management that we need to hear from, so.
Richard?
On the community group, I think, just to move it along, I mean, you could just ask for people to volunteer for the committee and say, you're going to settle on five and the mayor would appoint five people to the community group.
And are you talking about the community and staff group? Or are you talking about creating a just a community?
There's a, we're talking about a professional government group. The council, a third group that is citizens who would be a totally separate interview group. And then you pick up, figure out how many people you'd like on it. Five sounds like a good number and appoint.
I'd like that group to include city staff.
Well, city staff is going to be there through all of it anyway.
Tiffany?
At what point? I mean, I...
Because we're orchestrating the whole thing. I mean, I'd be glad to sit down with you when we get down to the end of the process, sit in an executive session and tell you what to think. But I don't need to, we're going to have enough to do. Because we've got to organize all those people. You've got tours, you've got community meetings. I don't need to be anywhere in the process and orchestrating.
You in particular, I'm talking, maybe our permanent city staff. People who are, who are going to be here. I mean, when this person takes over, you're not going to be here, right? I'm talking about people that currently are in city staff that will continue and probably work for this person. I'd like to get their input as well. I think including them for the tour group should be considered.
Jeff's had a question.
Oh, Jeff?
Just an idea. You talked about committees. Excuse me, Jeff, I'll just ask you a box. What I've done in my organization, what they've done in hiring processes, is Mr. Carson's idea with the professional group and then you have your council and then your citizen group. In lieu of that, creating three groups and then have your professionals with council members and citizens. And then you have those three groups spaced out that way, divided evenly so you don't have to worry about a forum issue with council on one group. So it's not a forum issue. You have two to three council members, two to three professionals. And you intermix that process because that shows community members talking with professionals from the partnering agencies, council members getting input from the community members that are there on that committee. And then that gives you a good vibe or gives you a good feel for what goes on. So in lieu of three separate groups, just professionals only from the regional administrator, regional people partnerships, the council and the community, intermix those numbers to where you have three separate groups and they're mixing the people. That way you don't worry about your, having a forum issue with things like that. There's a transparency thing that's there too, everybody has a part in that process. Does that make sense, George?
Yeah, I'm lucky enough, I have a hard time understanding exactly how well that's going to work.
Well, if so three groups, you still have, you know, people have different aspects of it. So, I mean, logistically, it would work as well as the other one. Same people, same number of groups, same amount of time. You know, the question is, do you, you know, do you want those groups intermingled or separated? And I don't have an opinion one way or the other.
Don?
I assume if we're going to have these three groups, we should get the resumes, I assume, printed and get out to everybody because they're going to have to have resumes to make decisions.
Well, we've got to get it down to three first.
Okay, that, well, I'm assuming we're down to, I'm assuming we're down to three.
Not until next Thursday.
Well, okay, I'm assuming it's next Thursday then. And I would like, I would prefer three groups. The city council, the professional group. I don't know how many that'd be, three or four, I assume. And then five to seven from the city. And I think each group should have the opportunity to meet with these people after they've seen their resumes and talk with them. And then these two groups come and report to the city council and give their recommendations and we, city council moves onward. That's the way I would like to do it.
Okay.
I kind of agree with Jeff. You know, I feel like maybe if you get all of the city council in a little group and you get all of the professional in a little group and then you get all the little morons in another group. I think we should have equal, so everybody, so I don't feel like I'm just a regular person. I want to feel like I at least have some input to the mayor, to the council, to the professionals and whoever they are. I feel like, I don't think you should divide it. I think we all should have an equal opportunity to talk to our peers, not just someone professional talking to each other.
Tom?
I went through the last process on, that's, part of what happens on, on trying to be fair to them. Is if you do come up with, it's a pretty generic thing. And you come up with questions and they get the questions and you don't get into a big conversation with them because all of a sudden you're talking to one person and not to all six people. So it comes down to where they're sent, they're getting a question, you give them a question, they're talking with a question. And I believe that we were broke up into three different types of groups because the professionals have a different type of question they're going to ask. There's different types of information they don't want to have. There's different types of information the council want to have. And there's different types of information the citizens want to have. So it's good to have three, you know, three specific groups on it because the questions are going to be different and they're going to, they're going to understand the answer a little bit more. But the problem, what happens to them is you do get a very specific group of questions and you keep it pretty tight. You don't get into a great big conversation with all of them because it winds up not being fair for them. So that's what they're going to say. They're going to say, get it down to a pretty tight thing. Get some basic things to them so the professionals know that these guys know what they're doing professionally. The council knows that they know what you're asking them. The citizens understand. And so you have a variety of questions in there. Each group and each group's going to have a little bit different type of questions. Each group, and each group's gonna have a little bit different type of questions they want. That's how, that's how, it was pretty, it was pretty basic, it was, so.
Lance was next. You're up, Lance.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just wanna say I, I do trust Mary Ann, Rich, and the rest of the staff to, to come up with a proposal for us at the next meeting for how to do this more elaborate day-long interview process. My question is, do you have, maybe Mary Ann and Rich, do you have, if we discussed this enough and thrown out enough ideas, that you could take our ideas and put them together and, and bring it back to us, or, you know, it's next Thursday, with a recommendation for, for a process? So at that point, I mean, I feel like, let's, let's hand it up for our staff.
Let's have a consensus vote then to direct our staff to, to do that. Okay. Don?
Yes.
Tiffany?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lance?
You mentioned.
Eva? Myself, yes. Okay, you hereby been directed.
Oh, I don't give a vote?
Don't give up.
Yeah, I have a question.
I have a question too.
But two weeks out, so you wanna pick a date that we would have the three finalists here? Would it be like a Saturday or, you know, so?
Probably needs to be a Saturday.
Would it be July ninth or the sixteenth?
July nine.
Yeah.
That's, that's two days after.
No, because we would, we would give us two weeks.
Yeah, you're right, so.
Have to be the sixteenth.
All right, sixteen. All right, that's it.
And they'd probably be here, if, if some of them are the out-of-town gang, they'd probably be here at least overnight.
Yeah, I would tell all of them, I'm gonna contact them about this Thursday's interview, and I will, I'll give them a heads up that the three finalists will need to be here all day on the sixteenth. And so they'll have to fly in on a Friday, if they wanna do it, so, yeah.
Yes, Tiffany?
So, we still need to set up the committee of five. You have to notice.
No, we're gonna do that after his recommendation.
But you need two weeks to get it together, according to our.
Well, it's a little bit more, two weeks now, because we're going out the sixteenth.
We can still ask for five people to be on the, the public group.
Okay, so, Kathy, do we need to stipulate what that committee is? Can we do that tonight so we can get it started?
It's up to George to agree on that.
I know, it's up to George to agree on anything, but.
I'll go. So.
Do you wanna come in in the morning or?
Yeah, I'll come in in the morning. Okay. Tom?
And I just make a point that, for everybody, this, this could get real fluid as far as these candidates. These people are put in for this job, but they're put in for jobs everywhere else too. And, and the whole thing could change, a whole, by the, by the time July sixteenth comes around, this whole, this whole thing could change a, could change a whole lot on, on people themselves, except not, not even from our side. From their side, it changes, the candidates changing a lot, didn't it?
Okay, so I wanna give George authorization, I wanna, just so that we take a consensus, so that you have, we have to give you the authorization to start up a committee, a citizens group committee for the interview process, for the final interview process of the three, the three chosen city administrators. So, so I think we should give George that consensus so he can work on that.
And that date is the sixteenth?
The sixteenth, yeah. So. You have a question?
Yeah, there's, there's no need for a consensus vote, our, our council rules already give them authority to create a temporary committee. So you can do that, and we've discussed it, so I don't think we have to do that. But I did wanna say though, that, in, in response to Tom's comment, that because it's a fluid situation, and, and you can have candidates drop out and so on, that, that next Thursday, it's important for us to rank our candidates rather than eliminate three. Because we could take our three, two of them pull out, then you could go with our, our next three, so.
Good point. Yeah. Okay. Everybody, I'm gonna, we're gonna take a, a five-minute break or ten-minute break, so. Postponing for ten minutes. For the budget, so I guess I have to. I thought I did too, but I was informed.
We did, here, close the public hearing.
He closed, he closed it here in comments.
Okay. Close it again, just to make sure.
Anyway, unless anybody has something to say, I'll close it again.
Will I get a chance to speak before you discuss resolution twelve seventeen?
No, because you can talk during resolution twelve seventeen. So with that, I close public hearing to two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget. Okay, so now we will move on to new business.
We found out that that night, that Thursday night is a, is a board meeting, so we as a council need to decide whether or not we wish to continue with that schedule and ask that the board have their meeting elsewhere, or not.
They can, they can.
Okay, so we'll just have the port reschedule. Okay, so then we'll go to item number nine, new business. We'll have staff report, public comment, and then council action. Item A, approved law enforcement service agreement with Hutter River County. Okay, do you have a staff report, Richard?
Yeah, a very short one. This is our annual contract with the sheriff's office to provide at least additional twenty-four hours per week in patrols. The dollar amount has gone up about two thousand dollars. It is now eighty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight, starting to be effective July first.
Okay, at this time, is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will go to council action. Does any member of the council have any discussion on this?
Just make a motion, we approve the law enforcement services agreement with Hutter River County.
I second that. Oh wait, I can't.
I'll second.
I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded to approve the law enforcement services contract with Hutter River County. Discussion, Lance?
Could we, probably just said this, I'm sorry, could we repeat what the increase is this year, the percentage is as well?
I don't have a percentage, it's about two thousand dollars. It went from like eighty-two to eighty-four something.
Do they give us any information as to why that, why that's been increased?
Other than it's just, you know, cost of doing business has gone up.
But it seems like their cost of business is going down because they made budget cuts.
I, that's all I have.
So any further discussion on this item? Okay.
I, I think it's important that Cascade Locks get police protection services, like a lot of other emergency services. It's important that we have that. I'm also aware that our, our taxpayers do pay property taxes to county, just like everyone in the county, and that's supposed to pay for sheriff services as well. And so I hope that in the future, we're gonna continue to encourage the sheriff to provide those services to Cascade Locks as he or she would to every part of the county. I know there's a lot of people that don't feel very good about the fact that we have to pay for it. So I just wanted that part of the record.
Okay. Any other comment? I have a comment that, that, and I know we've kinda touched on it, but I think it needs to be investigated a little bit further. And that's the fact that, that when a police officer is here in town while he's under the city's employ, that, that there is a possibility that the tickets that he writes, that some of that money should be coming to the city of Cascade Locks, because we're actually paying for him at that time. So I think that needs to be checked into, Richard. So. Tom?
Yeah, I would just say we should probably at least keep it around, just like any, they're gonna, that's part of their income. So if you take their income from them, then the cost goes up too. We should at least know what, how much, what kind of income they make from, from down here. And our, the, the protection we get from them, that we're paying for here is actually extra protection, extra protection. So we pay the money for, for guaranteeing so many hours down here beyond what anybody else in, in the county gets. So we still, if we call, you know, if they're not here, and we call for deputy, they, they hustle right on down here, just as they'll hustle down there, part of the, part of the county. But what we're paying here is for extra protection for us.
Correct. Lance?
Thanks for clarifying that, Tom. I think it's important people understand that. In the past, the sheriff has made statements to this council that if we didn't agree to the sheriff's contract, he didn't know when they'd be able to send people down, or do. So that's out there, that's been said in the balance, not, not within the last year, but it has been said. Last time we renewed the contract, we had to ask to have Seventh C added, where we got the report of the hours that they spent in Cascade Locks before we paid. And I would suggest that, along with George's suggestion, that we look into the, the revenue generated by tickets written. We could also ask to have a Seventh D that says that they'll provide a monthly report of income generated from tickets given in Cascade Locks. I'd actually like to see that added to this as the first step, because I know that if you, I think George had just checked into it. If you check into it, that's a phone call to the sheriff, and he's gonna say, no, that can't be done.
Yeah, that's true.
Because he's ha, I, at least three of those phone calls that I know of, since I've been on council, and he's always just, he or the deputy would say, no, can't be done, can't do that. And so I think that a first step would be asking to have that report as, as part of the, the monthly hourly report.
Is it, Don?
I did, I just noticed that they said they had, the total calls for May was a hundred and twenty-one, and they actually wrote thirty-nine citations in Cascade Locks in May.
Tom?
You know, since you're thinking about it too, it's probably, I would assume where the sheriff's gonna come from. But it's nice to know, you know, what's generated down here, but I, I got an idea, he would say that if the, if the deputy was up here, up there, instead of down here with us, he could generate a certain amount of money for them too. So to, to him, I'm sure he probably would consider a, a watch one way, one way or the other.
Right. Lance?
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, we're actually paying for our deputy's position, the amount that we're paying for. So if we didn't have this contract, it wouldn't generate anything, because they wouldn't have that position.
That's true. I agree. So is that something that we need to direct Richard in to try to add into the contract?
When does this, when does our contract expire?
Energy first, so.
Do you, do you?
Do you wanna go with that coverage still in this council meeting to deal with it?
Oh, you're asking me?
Well, I think the council as a whole.
I think they, I think we have coverage.
Until July first?
No, I think we have coverage because we're taxpayers in Hutter River County. And we may go a week without the sheriff coming down. But I, I think if we, if we ask for that stipulation in the, in the contract, like we do a year ago with Seventh C, that, that he would grant it. If there's some reason why he can't grant it, then.
Well, I'd entertain a motion.
We already have a motion.
Huh?
We already have a motion.
Oh, we do. Okay. Does the motion wanna be withdrawn and redid?
I can withdraw my motion.
Okay. Did you wanna redo your motion? Or Lance, do you wanna redo your motion?
He's having a better idea of what he wants, let him.
Well, I, I think we can approve it, subject to the addition of a stipulation that we get a report of the total number of, the, the revenue generated by citations issued in Cascade Locks as part of our monthly report.
Okay.
And that that be added as a stipulation in this contract under section seven.
So add it, sign it, send it.
Right, we have to have, we can't approve, we can't approve the contract until that's in the, in there and done. Lance?
Well, I'm saying we approve it with that added, so that if, with that addition. So that if, if they disagree with that, then they don't have a contract, and they're not getting the revenue.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If they do agree to, we've already approved it, and they can sign off.
I see.
So that's my motion.
I see what you're saying.
Should I re-see it, or was that clear enough?
Is there a second?
It's seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to, you wanna reread the motion for me, Kathy?
I want to approve the contract with the addition of reporting revenue generated in Cascade Locks under section seven.
All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. We will go on to nine B, approval of resolution twelve fifteen adopting municipal corporate budget for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, making appropriations and authorizing the expenditures and levying taxes. At this time, there would be a staff report, Richard?
Yeah, three items. One is, I would like to add seven hundred dollars for the association into the line item on page fifteen, because we have to give them sixty days' notice, which is two months payment. So it's like three hundred and thirty-three dollars a month, something like that. So if you're gonna approve that, then I, we move the seven hundred out of contingency back into that line item. Just to make.
What page is that?
Fifteen.
Why it out of contingency?
Because it was the easiest one to figure out.
Well, the utilities should have proposed nine thousand dollars, and you have ten thousand and one hundred and forty-two, which was taken out of that line.
Okay.
So out of contingency.
Yeah, okay. Utilities.
So we're adding seven hundred, is that right?
Just to cover the two months.
To this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Sorry.
Go ahead, Lance.
Why wouldn't you propose adding all three thousand back, as was suggested by people who spoke at the hearing?
Because we, at the very least, we have contract with them that I have to honor, which is thirty, we have to give them sixty days' termination notice.
He's asking why that's all we have.
I'm asking why wouldn't, I mean, it's been suggested during our, our public hearing that if we add back all three thousand, why wouldn't you propose that?
Because at the very least, okay, this, I'm not, this is the way it's come from the budget committee to the council. Want, you know, my job is, as a budget officer, is not to make counter recommendations to the budget committee. I'm just saying legally, we owe them the money for at least two months, because we have to give them sixty days' notice. So I'm just trying to keep it, keep it legal.
But I guess where I'm coming from is, your job is also to attend to the daily affairs of the city. And by eliminating a contract with a volunteer association, discouraged volunteerism in an important department of the city that basically runs on volunteerism. As the city administrator, why wouldn't you recommend that we try to keep those volunteers in this important department?
Because it's, it's a public policy issue that's up to the council.
But you can, you can make policy recommendations.
Actually, no. As a budget officer, my job is to prepare a balanced budget and submit it to the budget committee. At that point, it, it, it is their jurisdiction, and they are to make a recommendation to you, and at that point, it's your jurisdiction. It, at that point, it, it, it is their jurisdiction, and they are to make a recommendation to you, and at that point, it's your jurisdiction. My job, I did, I gave you a balanced budget, and I submitted it, and as a budget officer, from this point forward, my job is to try and keep everybody, uh, process-wise on track. And to make sure that everything is done within the state requirements, in this case, we have a legal contract I'm concerned about.
You're talking about your role as budget officer, I'm talking about, I'm actually talking about something separate from your role as budget officer. I'm talking about your role as city administrator, which is to administer the whole city, which includes, um, things beyond your responsibilities as, as a budget officer. And so, as city administrator, you're giving the staff report, I'm asking, as city administrator, why aren't you recommending that we encourage volunteers?
Because I think the answer's the same. Background that I come at it in terms of city administrators and city managers is, it's, our job is to implement the policy of a council. The council's job is to set policy and not administer the city. So I think it's a policy matter for you to decide, and once you decide it, then I will implement it.
Tiffany?
This is not the decision of Mr. Person, this is the decision of the budget committee, therefore, that if, that is the recommendation that he is, he's giving out, is what the budget committee recommended.
Well, this is just staff report time, it's not discussion time, I'm just asking a question.
And he, they have to be several times.
It's, you're trying to discuss, that's something different.
No, he's asking me several times.
No, I, I've, I've asked several questions to clarify based on his answers.
And he's giving you the same answer each?
That's not true.
Said there were other news?
Yeah, there's, there's two other items. Um, one is, I've had several discussions with budget committee members about the ten percent cut. And without going a long way through it, basically, if the intent, we did the pers, the department twenty-one cuts in the other funds. If it was the intent of the budget committee to cut ten percent of personal expense in the general fund, then that will cut, that will come to thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. That, essentially, what I would suggest doing is, if you're gonna, if you're gonna take that ten percent out of personal expense, you take that out of there and put, and put it in contingency. Um, and I'm gonna have to make personnel cuts to, to pay for it. Specifically, I'll probably have to take a full-time position and reduce it to a part-time position to get to thirteen thousand. But in any case, uh, so that's, that's another question that's on the table. Because I went back and reviewed the minutes, and, um, from my point of view, it's a misunderstanding, I think, in terms of what was, what was said, and, and if that's what the council wants to do, that's fine, we'll do it, we'll take care of it. The other one, the last one I have, is, uh, a memo regarding the fire chief's pay going down to fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. I can do one of three things that I've listed in my memo, which is, uh, keep him at the same rate of pay un- until we, or you, address the budgetary shortfall. Uh, continue him on as a full-time employee, but at a reduced hourly rate, which would be about thirty percent less. And then last would be to, it would, it's very similar, relative to being a full-time employee to a part-time employee, which would probably be about three-quarter time. But from a bookkeeping point of view, I need to know what to do. I thought it's two. Okay. Okay. Um, we need to move about a thousand, there was two thousand bucks in the museum for utilities. We haven't heard back from the board, I think they want to get together and have a, a joint meeting with you to talk about it, so if we could put a thousand of that back, the thousand with the two thousand back, just to bridge it, that would be, that would be helpful.
What page is that?
Uh, whoa.
It's on page seven.
Okay, on page three, under miscellaneous and legal expenses, there's eleven hundred dollars, we're gonna take that down to a hundred and move the thousand over to utilities. That's it.
Next, we have a public comment on, uh, adopting resolution number twelve fifteen, municipal corporate budget for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Was anyone from the public here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will go on to council action. So, at this time, would anyone like to, any council member like to speak? Don?
I, I've asked this several times, and I haven't got an answer that satisfies me yet. What are we going to do if we don't get the money from Hutter County?
Yeah, I was just wondering.
It's a grant, but who's gonna pay us? We're responsible for paying it, don't we still owe the contractor money?
Yes, but it's, it's a grant. I, I don't know the answer to that question, but it's a totally different fund.
But it, but, but we're responsible for paying the money. And I've, I've put in calls to the county administrator several times, and his answer is that. We're waiting. He's, well, you know, his answer is that the, the nine-one-one manager is gonna get back, get back to him on it. I know, this has been going on since February, but the way I read the contract, cascade locks is responsible for it. You may be right. That's the way I read the contract, and, and from February till now. But I have met with the sheriff separately, and, in a meeting on this, and he said he, that he was a lot more comfortable than he originally was with the system, now that he understands it better. So I, I haven't, I haven't heard anything negative about this. Well, it's been going on since February, it's a little bit negative. No, I mean, it's, obviously, I'd like to see it resolved.
Tiffany?
Um, Marion, on page twenty, we have that regional partners equipment. Are we anticipating, have, we received any of that income?
We received all with the county's permission.
Okay, should that be, are we anticipating getting it by Thursday?
Like I said, the grant is supposed to be closed out as of June thirtieth. I've not heard from, um, the chief on what the situation is on the grant. Um, what it could come down to is if it is not closed by June thirtieth, I'll have to do a supplemental budget.
Okay, so you're more comfortable doing that than just going ahead and.
No, I'd like to, but you don't have the cushion to do that. You can only do.
Do the money in, money out.
You can only change it by five thousand dollars, or ten percent or whatever's greater. You only have a thousand in there. You can't change the budget more than a hundred dollars. Or five, five, four hundred dollars.
So that'll have to be fixed with the.
So if, if it doesn't come to an end by June thirtieth, then I'm probably gonna have to do a supplemental budget to get some numbers back in there. Because we have two outstanding grants that are supposed to be closed by the end of June.
Two?
Yes, you have the, um, communications grant, and you also have the AFG grant for bunker gear. That's actually fire shelters. And I, um, not sure the status of that either.
So Jeff, I mean, um, Richard, who, who has the final approval in Hutter to approve, to pay the matching funds?
Well, I suppose at the end, they would be the board of county commissioners.
The board of commissioners, okay.
I don't know, I don't know what the county administrator's authorization of it is, so it's, I can't say right off the top. He may have already been authorized, he just hasn't pulled the trigger on it, so to speak.
Lance?
On the issue of the, the communications grant, do we have an intergovernmental agreement with our partners on this grant?
Mm-hmm.
And has that been reviewed by our attorney?
Our, yeah.
Yeah, before you came here. So our attorney told us that we are not going to be obligated to pay that when he reviewed it, so.
Well, I've never talked to him.
Yeah, I have, because I was on council when he reviewed it.
No.
It's one of the things that we wanted in that government, in, intergovernmental agreement, was that we would not be allowed to pay. So they still have to approve it, but once they do, they're obligated to pay it. According to that agreement. And so I, I think that, yeah, I mean, I could, I could pull out a contract and say, well, here's how I review it.
Oh, it's passed the law.
But.
Huh?
It's passed the law, you can just like say it, oh.
But when, I mean, I guess that's why we paid two hundred bucks an hour to that attorney, to get him to review the contract, so that he, that we know we've got protection there. So I just wanted to make the point that we do have that, that protection that has been reviewed by a trained, experienced attorney.
So this was earlier on when that agreement was made, so if Hutter doesn't pay, then we can go back against the attorney?
Well, I, I mean, again, I'm not someone that's trained to interpret or write contracts, I think that's why we hire an attorney, and I think your question is actually a question for an attorney, not for a teacher.
Okay.
So I, I'm sorry, I was.
I was just trying to get the relevance to. Okay.
I think, I think we can sit here and try to interpret the contract.
No, that's fine.
I think we can, but.
Okay.
We do, we did have an attorney, and he was paid, and they did that.
Okay. Tom?
Well, I, I believe all the, all the attorney is saying is if everybody, if everybody falls through, and everything works out the way it's supposed to work out, yes, they're responsible for it. But if it doesn't work out, and if, if other issues arise, that, that people can't, can't meet or don't meet the, the, the grant, you know, qualifications and all that, then, then the whole, the whole game changes then. And I think that's what we're waiting on from, on nine-one-one, to say, this thing's all up, it's all up and it's working right, and we're not having any issues, and there aren't any more expense. This, this thing's doing what it's supposed to be doing, and as I understand it, that's what we're, that's what we're waiting for.
Lance?
Just, just to respond to that, and that's, that is a discussion we had when this grant was awarded, and the answer to that question was, by the attorney, was, uh, if it's not up to specifications from one of our partners, then the contractor is responsible for not meeting the specifications of the grant. Contractor's one's responsible.
I, I think for the purposes of, of this item, Marion answered the question, which was, we can't deal with it here because it, it exceeds the limit, and we'll have to do it through a supplemental, it was the original question.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
So do we need to make decisions on these things first before we pass? So do you want to take them one at a time?
That's what I was saying, more discussion.
Is there a motion?
No, we need to decide what we need to do with these things that are represented to us.
Well, as I recall, as I recall, what happened in Roger was, uh, when we were, Darvin Porter was, was trying to work out and get the point, and I think that the final point was that we, we cut, uh, ten grand from, or ten percent, excuse me, from, from personnel. So I would, so I would say probably what you're talking, where you come up there with fifteen, thirteen thousand dollars off, or is probably what we're looking, I would say what we're looking to do is what was the, the wishes of the budget.
Okay.
Any consensus on that?
Take a consensus vote? All those in, in, uh, that it was a ten percent across the board cut to personnel ex.
Right.
Expenses, or just personnel?
Yeah, personnel expenses.
Personnel expenses? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes.
The other item was the seven hundred dollars for the association. We're moving that.
Any comment?
I'm moving seven hundred from the utilities to the, um, volunteers association to pay for the two months.
Well, I agree we need to, we need to follow that contract. But that was the, the same thing, and then, and the, um, in the budget, um, during the budget committee, Chief Pritchard came back with a variety of cuts, and that was one of the things he cut out was the, the volunteer association. There were things that we added back in there, but, uh, we didn't add back in the, the volunteer association to try to, to try to bring that, uh, that department into a, a good type fiscal responsibility.
Lance?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to give a shout out to the volunteers that might be watching this meeting, and say there are people on council, um, that do value your services to this community, so thank you for that. We appreciate it. And I would like to, as a discussion on this, I would like us to add back the entire three thousand back to that, and to continue that contract with the association. I think you can take it out of contingency. And there's also things that have been suggested during the public hearing about ways to increase the revenue in the department, so we can make some of those changes as well.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Eva?
Yeah, um, I seem to remember there was a, like a sixty thousand dollar, um, amount that came on the budget that we reconsidered in the budget committee, because we felt that that wasn't what the intent of the whole budget process was, for us to take sixty thousand dollars out of that account. Now, uh, Chief Pritchard had been advised though, that he had to come up with a budget with sixty thousand dollars less money, so he took out everything. Because there is no budget, sixty thousand dollars less, there's, we don't even have enough to really operate. So, that money was brought out, and I brought up to the point that it was, um, on negotiation, on a contract. Really think that we should very carefully think about this, because if you don't have a chief, you don't have volunteers, and you don't have an apartment, how are we being responsible? You're saying, there's all, all kinds of offhand reports about, well, you know, everybody's gotta tighten their belts. Well, um, they do, and they do, there's lots of things that they do for the community that are with that money. So, I, I absolutely disagree with, um, with taking away, I would also concur that I think that we should put the three thousand dollars in, and be happy to put the three thousand dollars in, and, uh, and make this right.
Okay. Any other further comment? Tom?
So, uh, what happened in the budget, and, and what hasn't been happening in the, in the years prior to this, is, uh, we cut no money out, we gave them, there's eighty thousand dollars, almost eighty thousand dollars coming from the, from our property taxes in there. There's a hundred and ten thousand dollars coming in from, from Hamilton Services and Tees. And what's been happening to us in the past is, because what we came in initially with was, was one sixty. And, but we don't actually get the one sixty, we're not, we're not getting all the money that we're, we're putting down on these budgets, that's what's happening. We're, we're estimating that we're gonna get this, and then it doesn't come in. And if you look at our largest report, the R report, said we've been going in, um, over a hundred thousand dollars in the hole. We're spending more than a hundred thousand dollars in what we're, we're bringing in, because we've got this number up here that's not a, that not, not a correct number, and we're spinning against it. Obviously, because we're going in the hole a lot. So what this budget committee did is said, let's get it back, well, let's come back to what's really there. What's really there is that eighty thousand dollars. Um, what's may not even be really there is the one ten, we brought down the one ten, and that may not even, probably be there. These are the monies that you actually have, you cannot continue to, to run, to run in the hole. And the volunteers that I've always brought up, and I support. The volunteers that I've always grown up, and I support volunteers, the volunteers I've always grown up with, are people that, they're going to go out there no matter, no matter what's going on. They don't want, they don't want the thing to go, they don't want the thing to go broke. They don't want to be a, a, a thing that you have to give up on, because there is no money for it. All this budget committee did is finally come in after, after four years of saying this thing was a, going to be a money-making thing, um, and, and we all know emergency services isn't going to be that way. We all understand that. But, but the deal is, is you do have to stay within the monies that you have, and that's what this budget committee did. They looked at exactly, they, they got it as tight as they could for the money things, and they, they, and it was hard cuts. It's not easy cuts for, for them. They, and they do support the volunteers. The, the whole council does support the volunteers. But we got a, we got a fiscal responsibility here, here too, and we've got to stay within it. We've been going in the hole, and it's won't help you a whole lot to close down a museum, it won't help you a lot to close down recreation, and dump all that into emergency services, because it's, you're not in the hole ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand, you're in the hole a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars. And that's been going on for at least a couple of years here. But for the last, all of the years that the, that it's been an enterprise zone, it has been, it is, it's expenses have outran its revenues. And this, and it wasn't easy. These things aren't easy for anybody. But they came in with a, they came in with a, with a, with a dire budget now. That's, no, they don't want to go that way, but that's what they're stuck with. And I, and I stand behind it. I stand behind, I, I love good numbers, I stand behind the, the numbers that are, that are here. And I think, I think, I think the budget now, then will be operated at a, at a, at a chance where it can survive financially.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a comment. Being on the budget committee was a, was a very hard process for everybody. It was long and, and time-consuming, okay? And there were several issues involved, and to me, they're, they're, they're basic issues, you know? Is, you want to try to maintain all the services that you can, okay? But the reality is, when a fund goes into the negative, it draws down from every other fund. And so, every other fund begins to have less and less. And so, and then, if another fund runs over, so that makes it even more devastating. So, it gets to the point where, to be fiscally responsible, you have to address the fact that there's only so much money. And when you don't have additional monies, and like Tom said, it, it's, it's quite apparent that revenues did not exceed expenditures. Expenditures exceeded revenues repeatedly, okay? Year in and year out. You can go to the auto reports, you can read it, okay? The fund is in a negative. It's not supposed to be spending any more money. It's supposed to be trying to bring itself back into line, okay? And when it doesn't bring itself back into line, and we don't have the money to continue to do that, something else has to happen. And that, the fact of the matter is, if you don't have the money, we can't continue to, to fund things, because it's bringing the rest of the city down. So, eventually, there won't be any money for the city for other things, okay? So, you know, we have to be able to work our budget, and I honestly feel that we had a fourteen-member budget, and the budget was passed by the committee soundly, that they approved this budget, and I feel that we, the council should approve the budget the way they approved it, because that's, that was the intent. We had seven people from the public, and seven counselors, and my, or six counselors and myself, on the budget. And it was approved to be passed that way, and there was a reason for it, so that we would be responsible to all the other departments, and that we would be responsible to the city and the citizens of Cascade Locks. And it's not the fact that, that we are not going to continue to try to have and support the volunteers and support the fire department. It's just that we're going to have to do it in a better financial way, so that we can continue to be a city and do that properly. And I know people might not agree with it, but it's the right thing to do. Lance?
Okay, just between you and Tom, talking about general themes in the budget, and defending the, the cuts that the budget committee made, I, I kind of got lost. I thought we were going through Richard's, uh, item-by-item list. You did call it a consensus vote on a ten percent cut, which we've been told will include a, a cut of a position to full-time to half-time. And then I thought we were starting to discuss the putting back the three thousand dollars to the association contract. Over seven hundred, as, as Richard suggested.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, got out of bounds.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I'm just asking the question. Are we, uh, is it a general discussion, or are we, are we taking these item-by-item?
I'm sorry if I got off, off track. I apologize. Tiffany?
I expanded, I expanded on the item. I was talking about that item, but I didn't understand why that item, why that item was out of there.
So, can we do a consensus on whether or not to move seven hundred dollars from the utilities to the, um, to the volunteers' association?
We actually proposed moving three thousand back.
Okay, well, then take a consensus. I didn't, I didn't hear the...
I proposed it, and you were proposing.
Okay, well, take a vote on it, and then we're going.
Okay, so is, there's a proposal on the floor to put three thousand dollars back in the, uh, volunteer association fund? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fails?
It wasn't a motion.
Or consensus.
Okay, so now we're going on a consensus to take the seven hundred from the utilities and put it in the volunteer association.
Okay. There's now a call for a consensus to put seven hundred dollars in the association, volunteer association, uh, budget? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes? Okay. So, what was next?
We're doing the...
The fire department position, uh, fire chief position. We did, we just made that decision after we approved the budget.
The museum as well.
I think you, I need to vote on the museum.
And the museum.
Yeah.
The museum? Oh, that's right, the thousand dollars.
Moving the thousand dollars from...
This lane is legal.
...expenses on page three, and putting it out on page seven for museum utility expenses.
Okay, so, call for a consensus vote to put, how much was it, thousand?
Thousand.
Thousand dollars? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? What was left?
Well, the, the last, the, the other one is not something that, that needs to be done as part of the budget, because the dollar amount was already recommended from the budget committee, so I, I don't need an answer on that.
All right then.
That's all I have.
So now we're on to, uh, approve resolution twelve fifty, twelve fifteen, adopting the municipal corporate budget for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote.
I must have a motion.
Well, that's true.
Six goes after the motion.
I make the motion to approve resolution twelve fifteen, adopting municipal corporate budget for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve municipal corporate budget. Any discussion? Lance?
Well, um, there's definitely opinions, uh, on the work of, of this particular budget committee. We had in our boxes, when I came in, a letter from a person who congratulated them on their hard work. We also have a number of people speaking about concerns with this budget at our public hearing, as well as over the last month and a half at city council meetings, and even at budget committee meetings where they were allowed to speak. So, I just want to recognize that there are people that look at, at the work of this budget committee both ways. And you can, I guess you can state that it's, it's the right thing to do, uh, but there's also, I want to recognize that there's people who don't believe it's the right thing to do. You can look at, I mean, you talk about bringing a deficit into line, it has to be taken care of, um, and in a vacuum, that's, uh, that's one way to look at it. But when you look at eliminating safety precautions, safety, um, protection for the community, you do have to weigh those things, as councils have been doing in this community for years. When I think about the budget, uh, committee and the work that they do, I, I, I mean, I kind of look at it like you're mowing the lawn. Over the course of a year, uh, you know, things may grow out of balance, but you come back in, you keep it up, and you set a new budget. Usually, when you mow the lawn, you use the lawn mower, maybe a weed eater, um, if you want to get real close. In my opinion, this budget committee, uh, got a bulldozer and a blowtorch out, and decided to mow the lawn. And sure enough, we ripped up sections of the lawn. In the process, uh, we damaged the foundation of the house. We used the blowtorch to try to scorch the lawn, and now we've got some fires burning in our lawn. And it'd be nice if we had someone put those fires out, but we don't now. The, the result of this budget committee, and the major players on this committee, are people who have been marginalized by this community for a number of years. And one good thing about it is, finally, some people that, that didn't have a voice found their voice, and they got to express it. And in looking at this budget, it can be seen as, as those people's attempt to strike back all those people that have been listening to them. They've done a good job of that. Unfortunately, that's not good government. The budget process is not a time, uh, to strike back, or, uh, to be vindictive. The budget process is a time to turn things up and even them out. That's not what we've done here. I do believe that this budget, as I, as I've said on several occasions at the budget committee, but I do believe this budget, uh, does significant damage to our community. There are a number of people across the community particularly concerned with what it does to our fire department. That alone, um, should give us reason to reconsider the things that we're doing in this budget. But there's also several other, uh, issues that can be raised, uh, you know, starting with this ten percent cut. You know, we, we haven't had a discussion about any policy changes about what types of positions should be cut. We've just made a cut. Unfortunately, that's, um, also not good government. And step by step through this process, uh, I see a budget here in front of us that is, uh, that, that's not representing good government. The, the people of Cascade Locks deserve better than this. Our staff came to us with a balanced budget on April twenty ninth, uh, and this budget committee hacked away at it. We, as, as several people have said already, we now have a mess. Particularly in the fire department, you now have a budget that, uh, does not provide that department with the opportunity to generate revenue. And you're going to have the same deficits. You're perpetuating the problem that you're claiming to fix. So, um, among other concerns, uh, I'll, I'll stop there, but, uh, this is not a budget that's sustainable. We've already discussed one area where this is going to have to be, we're going to have to do a supplemental budget process to fix some things this budget committee did, and, uh, I can't support it.
Okay. Don?
I've said this a lot of times. Everybody wants to ignore numbers. In year eight and nine, just in one fund, we had two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-three cents. The next year, we had one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen and seventy-five cents. This year, that same fund, we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars in it. What will we have in all of our funds the next year? And we don't want to look at these things. I think we better start looking at them.
Tiffany?
I want to say that this, um, it was a very tedious, um, budget process. First off, I want to say that the only thing that we discussed as far as supplemental budget tonight was, had to do with the FEMA grant. There was nothing else that was discussed that had to do with a supplemental budget that the, that the, um, budget committee worked on. A lot of things have been left intact. I think that it's hard on both sides, because some just want it to continue the way it was, when others want to look at the real hard facts and the numbers, and to figure out what to do with them. And there has to be a middle ground somewhere. It can't be one way or the other. And I feel that, as hard as it was, that this was a good start in the right direction to get things in order. And I, there have been claims that supplies and materials were cut in the fire department. That is not true. What was proposed is being approved. There have been claims that other things have been cut, and if you look, a lot of things have not been cut. Yes, the, the fire chief's wages have been cut, and that's something that we as a council are going to have to deal with. Something that we as a council, at the last council, should have dealt with, and not left, and continued to, to, um, magnify the problem. And now it's come about that things need to be put in order, and we're going to have to make some tough choices, and do some things that we need to do to get the income that, that department needs to get going. But you just can't continue to throw money into a, a black hole without having a, a, a resolution to fix it.
Eva?
Yeah, um, in watching this whole process over the years, um, the budget stuff always comes up, always. And we have been running in a deficit. We have been. But it's been allowed to go, so I'm going to agree with you on that. But to have people decide that in one year, they're going to take such a drastic, crippling effect on an apartment, yeah, you take care of the numbers a little bit there, but you're not taking care of the people. I've heard from tops, twenty people, who think that this budget's a good idea. I have a letter that I wrote that's got a hundred and ten signatures the opposite way. What I say, and I've said over and over again, is that you could have tried to make a turning point where it wasn't so crippling. We were in a negative balance the last time. We were starting it down here, but you could have used oversight, which there hasn't been. There hasn't been good oversight, in my opinion, watching what's going on. And so, when you're going on like that, now you're just going to cripple this department that has no opportunity. There, there's, that fire department means nothing down there without people. And I am not going to support, um, a budget that is going to make a few people happy and the masses unhappy, and unprotected.
Tom?
Well, I disagree that the masses are unprotected. I, I believe we've got the volunteers in this town, and, and, and I expect the volunteers to step up to the plate. Like, it's, it's not the first time there's been issues out there.
Why do you step up to the plate?
I hope they step up to the plate, and as people step up to the plate.
Why do you say sixty cents?
Hey! Right.
And continue.
You've been a mayor before. You're out of order. Be quiet. Go ahead, Tom.
And continue to be the volunteers that we, that we've had in the past. It's, it's been, it, it has been tough to be volunteers. It's been tough to be volunteers in the fire department for, for years here, because Cascade Locks doesn't have a whole lot of money. And all, and we're giving them, we're giving them all the money in, that, that, that we, that we can in it. Every bit of money, every bit of money that, that the tax base, that we said we gave before, we're, we're, we're giving as much of that as we can. I guess they cut a, a, a little bit, because they're expecting more out of it. But we're giving them, we're giving them as much as we can out of it, and we're giving them everything they can from, from whatever they go out and earn money at. They've got to be able to stay within that. That's the bottom line. And I've been here, this is my fifth year on it, and in four years, we just went in a rubber stamp, a... And I've been here, this is my fifth year on it, and in four years, we just went in a rubber stamp of balanced budget. It was balanced. And yet, we've been going in the hole every time with our balanced budget. So, I mean, we could complain about this one, but I'm not sure what's going to happen here. I mean, if, if we don't control, if we don't control expenses, though, somebody's got to say we're going to control some expenses in here. Because even with this budget, which is balanced, doesn't mean, doesn't mean we aren't going to go in the hole $100,000, $200,000 here. Someone's going to keep on spending. Somebody's got to, somebody's got to say enough's enough, because you're going to lose, you're going to lose it all one way or the other. You cannot keep going down this road. And all this budget committee did, and you can say all the rhetoric, you know, you can have all the political statements you can on, but the numbers, the numbers don't lie on it. And the numbers say we've been going down a hole. And all this budget committee did, said was, which made a very tough, made a very tough statement. It wasn't easy for them. They just said, there are the numbers, that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to go by. We're going to follow those numbers of, of what is actually coming into you. And you get to spend what actually gets, comes into you. And everything else has to be cut.
I'd entertain a motion.
We're having a motion.
Oh, do we? I'm sorry. Call for the question?
Still questioning.
Lance?
Well, one of the things I wanted to point out was that, that we keep talking about these deficits that would happen year by year. And each year, council's been told that part of the reason why there's a deficit is the department doesn't have the ability to generate the revenue it needs to generate because of our lack of personnel. And I just kind of wanted to refer us to the public hearing where we were told. The study's been done. There's one other city that's trying to run an emergency services department like this. And we've, it's not the first time we've been told that. This council's been told that over and over. And you can, some people want to look at the deficits as a result of, of poor management on the department head. Another way to look at it is, it's, it's a department that just doesn't have the manpower to generate the revenue it needs to do to protect its community. And it's why I've supported ideas like paid-on call paramedic or part-time employee for this department in the past. And I'm disappointed that that hasn't, that that hasn't passed. I think it's something that you really have to look at. There's two ways to solve a problem here. You can cut expenses, which seems to be the popular thing, at least on our, our budget committee. But you can also look at increasing revenues, and, and solve the problem that way. And, you know, we haven't really looked at, at that side of the equation.
Thank you, Lance. Call for a question? Oh, Tom?
And I would just say again that, that we continue to spend beyond what we've, we've put in the part-time paramedics, and we put out $5,000 for them. At the same time, they were making the money, the, the chief was bringing in $10,000 with overtime, was eating up all the money that they were, that they were making. That they're making.
Hold on, hold on. Call for a question?
Well, that's the numbers I see.
You have a, you have an instruction sheet on how to call the question, and there hasn't been a, there hasn't even been a motion.
There has been a motion to approve the resolution.
Right, but you're talking about call the question. We've got the, we've got a last question in front of us. You haven't had a motion to remove the previous question.
I haven't finished saying something.
Go ahead, Tom. Sorry.
There's the same thing. This budget committee is paying the bills. There was a, there was a huge bill we didn't even try to pay on the $150,000 bid. We're putting money towards it. We're, we're sucking it up in the general fund, and we're paying that. Every, every loan that's out there, we're going after. And Lance mentioned the $35,000, and well, you know, that was, that we got in here that, you know, that's another one we're going to, we're going to have to go on after the thing. We didn't, we didn't create it, but it's there, and we'll work on it. But the, but the deal is, we're, the deal is we've gotten ourselves in tougher times. Our auditor said, in lots of places, you're, you're heading in tough shape. And this, this budget committee moved us into a lot, moved us into a lot better shape in, in all of those positions.
Tiffany or Eva, who? It doesn't matter.
I called for the question. We, somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Now, you need to take a vote on whether or not to call for the question.
And it has to be adopted by a two-thirds majority.
Okay. All those in favor of calling for the question? Say, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes? Okay, so now we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the adopted mutual corporate budget for 2011, 2012? Say aye. Aye? All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes? Okay, we'll go on to resolution.
I'd like to assert my right to say why I opposed the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you would have earlier.
No, I didn't.
I just, I didn't know.
This, this budget now represents a 10% cut to our personnel. We don't have a plan for what that is. But we have to, we have to cut our salary to potentially every city employee. Because we have contracts we have to honor, it's actually more than 10% to the non-contracted employees. And a common theme perhaps tonight, we don't have a plan for that. It also only funds our fire department, or at least our, our personnel in our fire department at a 60 to 65% level, depending on who you believe and how you're doing math. And again, we passed this without a plan. We have no idea how we're going to fill that hole. It's not, it's not a budget that covers the entire fiscal year. Hopefully, we'll come up with a plan. But too many times here, we're just making cuts without plans. And again, as I said before, that's not good government.
Thank you. You want?
I, I just wanted to say we also need to decide what we're going to do with the fire chief's position as well.
Okay. Next, we will go on to.
It's not on the agenda, but it was a, a thing reported by.
I know, he, he stated that we could take care of that later.
Okay.
Later?
Is new in later?
If you do at the next meeting, you have a recommendation?
They'll have a recommendation for us at the next meeting.
But at this time, they'll continue as full, fully paid through the hour.
Well, are you talking about next Thursday?
No.
Do I have to go to the next council meeting? What's the plan until then, because we start the fiscal year sooner than that?
Continue with the full sound.
You don't, you don't have a mind.
Okay, we will go on to the approval of resolution number 1216, extending the City of Cascade Locks workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Cascade Locks and repealing resolution 1192. Staff report?
Yeah.
You have before you a, a resolution. This is mainly a housekeeping item. Every year, we have to renew our volunteer workers' compensation coverage. There's been no changes as far as the workers' compensation wage. And when I say wage, it's assumed the monthly wage for our volunteers and an aggregate assumed wage for the board. And this includes all of our boards. So I'm asking for your approval to approve this resolution as it is?
Okay. Is there any public comment on this issue?
One question. Cascade Locks, you said it goes to the boards. What boards are you referring to?
Would be the, the planning commission, the council, volunteer tourism, any of the boards that are volunteer.
To extend workers' rights compensation to them for volunteering, for, in a sense, for volunteer position.
But we have to cover them in case they are injured during the course of their.
So, think of a paper now.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. But should they, should they get injured while they're in their active war on city property or anything, then this is our cover.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve resolution 1216. Extend, uh, resolution extending the City of Cascade Locks workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Cascade Locks and repealing resolution 1192.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 1216, extending the City of Cascade Locks workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Cascade Locks and repealing resolution number 1192. Yes, Stephanie?
Mary, if you do, for number three, it says non-public safety volunteers will keep track of their hours with the assistance of a finance officer. Is that something you just do on your own, or is it, I mean, do we turn in a time card into you? I mean, uh.
No, for the boards, it's, it's status quo, any time. This would be non-board members if we hired somebody for snow plowing or those kind, or, excuse me, volunteers for snow plowing, those kind of things.
Okay.
And right now, we currently do not do that.
And under number five, it says roster of active volunteers will be kept monthly for our reporting purposes. It is acknowledged that city-county insurance services may request copies of these rosters during, should it say a year-end audit or?
During year-end audit. Every audit is, every, every year-end I have an audit. And I do currently keep the volunteer roster on the CIS, with CIS.
Okay, so not during the year-end audit?
No, I keep it during the year, but they ask for it a year in.
I'm just saying, maybe it's, I'm missing a word, during the year-end audit?
Yeah, I missed that a word.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, it's been moved, or was it?
Yep.
Motion? Yeah. There's a motion that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving resolution 1216? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? We will now go to IMD, approve resolution number 1217, authorizing transfer of funds between categories of various funds, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2011. Staff report?
Yeah, at the end of the year, we go into the budget, we have some line items within a fund that are, have been overspent, some have been underspent, which is all perfectly fine. You can do that within the M and S and with the personal services category. An example we have is that we, in the general fund, we overspent on the attorney. But also in the general fund, we underspent on the code enforcement. So, what these numbers reflect is, with, there's no inter-fund transfer here. What this is, within each fund, we're making line item adjustments. Those are up a thousand, down a thousand. That's, that exactly is what this is. It's just a reconciliation at the end of the year.
Yeah, they all balance. Okay, at this time, we'll call for public comment. Would anyone from the public care to speak?
Darlene Salinger, I'm a budget committee member since, and when I looked at this resolution, I was really confused. I, I'm still confused. You say 1,000 and 2,000 up and down, but if you go to the city light department, there's a $60,000 up and down. And it appears to me, now, and I, it is a very confusing thing to look at. It would appear that all of these numbers are going into administration, is, is what it says. It says, if you look where it's, where all these dollars are going to, it says to admin. I looked at last year's budget, and there wasn't this type of a resolution for last year. And so that sends up a red flag warning to me that there's $89,000 being transferred in this budget for this resolution. And we just did 12 or 14 budget committee meetings, and I didn't hear anything about getting short $89,000 for administration and personnel, as, as you can see where those transfers are going to. And so I am confused on that. At first, I thought that this was going to next year's budget, and that's not the case. So I'm wondering, if it appears that we're $89,000 short, and they're having, you have to transfer, because you said that these are over-expended items, that why this wasn't brought up sooner?
These, like I said, these are intra-fund, not inter-fund, or not moving it. When it talks about material services or personnel, it, these are not Department 21 funds. This is the administrative personnel that's paid for out of city light, material and services that's paid for out of city light. And it's just simply a matter of where the line items ended up, just balance them, money's there. But we had more money over here that we wanted to put over here. Which is, like I said, with the, the city attorney being overspent while the code enforcement was underspent, we just balanced and averaged to reconcile it at the end of the year. It's not money coming back to, for example, like I said, to Department 21 that's underwriting my position of finance officer and city reporter. It's in their administration, which is separate. So it's Tracy and his folks.
Is there any more public comment?
Tom? Oh, no, public comment? Seeing none, council comment? Tom?
So, so is that, so what you're saying is, in that fund, material services and personnel fund, that they've spent, the light's spent $60,000 more than what they budgeted for. So they're taking $60,000 that they have extra in material and services and put it into, into personnel?
Mm-hmm.
You, you need to approve it.
What do we know, what, what they spent $60,000?
They had more labor-intensive jobs in the city versus South Bank this year. And Tracy's saying that, that he just had too many projects here. When you do a budget, you plan for what your projects might be. And he obviously maybe had more projects here in the city than he did in South Bank. And he didn't use as much materials and services as he planned.
And the budget is an estimate.
It is an estimate.
And we have, you know, at the end of the year, not everything comes out exactly the way you thought, so you back, so you reconcile it this way.
And the reason it wasn't brought up to the budget?
Because it has nothing to do with the, the, the new budget here. It has nothing to do with the new budget.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1217.
Oh, can I ask a question?
Steve, sorry.
Go ahead, Lance.
Is the way through this resolution last year?
Last year, we didn't have to. All of our funds were well within the limits, and we had budgeted enough in those funds. So we didn't have to. What caused us this problem was, one, the attorney fees, and one, and I'm sorry, Rich, is Rich's salary. It caused, I'm sorry, it's the personal services and admin that went over, and it's mostly him.
Yes, Michael.
Actually, it was.
I mean, and I did bring, I did bring this to the attention of council when they hired Rich, and when they, when they did the attorneys. So it's not something new.
And that's on the record.
I just want to make, I just want to make that clear. It's not something new.
Yes, Stephanie?
Um, actually, it's not Rich's fault. It's the, it's what we.
She just squashed the needle.
The decision that was made when releasing the previous city administrator. So it's just a cumulative effect of all the things that happened. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 1217.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 1217. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes?
Make a motion to continue until 10:30?
It's been moved and seconded to continue the meeting until 10:30. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes? Next, we will go to approve resolution number 1218, establishing. Next, we will go to, uh, approve Resolution number twelve eighteen establishing a consistent policy for expenditures of budgeted and appropriated, uh, city funds by various city departments and repealing Resolution number eleven twenty-eight. Staff report?
Yeah, I'd like to ask that the council continue this. I, uh, realized late today that some of the changes I made were problematic, so I need to rectify it.
Sure, I had some changes.
Well, if you continue it, you can give the years.
Okay.
Make a motion to table it?
It's been moved to table Resolution twelve eighteen. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, or, excuse me, opposed?
I, I, I think we could have come up with a solution without even putting off again.
Anyway, motion passes. So now we move to resol- to approve Resolution twelve nineteen suspending, uh, number twelve nineteen suspending the two thousand five, two thousand twenty strategic plan and budget repealing Resolution number ten sixty-six. Staff report?
Uh, basically, the plan itself was actually a five-year plan, and it actually ran out in twenty-ten. There was, it was basically a five-year funding and capital improvement plan. Um, a lot of it was based on the belief that, but.
You said it ran out, but the actual resolution says two thousand and twenty.
Right, I'm just saying, but if you go into the plan and look at it, what it really does, it's, it was a five-year plan, there are financing and capital improvements, most of which were based on, you know, revenues that would be generated by the casino, new homes, new businesses, that kind of thing, so I, by using the word suspended, what I'm saying is, we need to go in and look at it. I mean, it needs to be revised, and the council needs to do, give the work on it to bring it up to date. It needs to be a little more strategic than it, than it is right now.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
Tina Tron, Cascade Locks. I just have a question on this one. If it's going to be suspended, um, and worked on, because it doesn't say terminate, um, is there specific items that you already know about that you want to actually work on in this plan? That you have a list that you can live and sell, like, fill the dollar? Or is it just, you don't have any idea and you want to go in there and look? I want to know the intent that you're going for with this by suspending it.
I mean, I'd like to go back and look, look at the, um, financing of, of, you know, part of it, and what, you know, what we can expect over several years. In other words, instead of budgeting it from year to year to year, one-year increments, you know, it would be better to do multi-year budgeting and look at it over a five-year period in terms of both any improvements, any equipment, staffing, the whole, the whole family.
From my perspective, seeing the chief's position reduced, um, seeing that three thousand taken out by the volunteer, and, um, looking at maybe us losing our volunteers on the strike, and then this on there, I just see, um, um, dismantling. And that's what this looks like. It looks like a way of suspending it where you really don't have an intent to update it, that you actually, your intent is to actually terminate it.
Can I?
And dismantle of the department.
Can I answer that? I, I did talk to Mr. Pritchard about this, and he said that it was a good idea to suspend it and to recons, to relook at it and reconsider what was in it, so, um, that was his recommendation.
Oh, can I answer that then? Because I had talked to Mr. Pritchard, and he told me he did not think it was a good idea to suspend it.
Uh, he told me.
Maybe you missed it.
Okay, wait, it's, it's probably coming.
I've been asking myself, I have been asking people on both sides of the issue, lots of questions back and forth. I'm not going to take everybody's word what I'm hearing, because there is a lot of controversy. And back when I asked a question to the council, I get different answers on things that should have been decided with different people, and I go home wondering, what, what did they say? And I have to go back for a few minutes trying to figure it out, so, thank you, though, but I, you can see where I'm coming from, that I can't take what you're telling me as an absolute, especially with the figures you were talking about. I will ask for a public picture request and look myself, because I'm seeing different things when I look at the actual records. So this is, this looks like dismatting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would care to comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to council action. Tom?
Is this comment or action?
Comment, action?
Just to clarify some of the things, and, and I'd spoke to, uh, Far Chief Pritchard quite some time ago, and actually, right now, we should have three more full-time employees, and we should be putting ten thousand dollars a year away for an ambulance, and it hasn't been done. And a lot of this has to do if the casino comes. That's all I, I want to say.
Eva?
I think that probably, this isn't the only thing that probably needs to be updated. It's ours plans and things like that, and I just question, I just don't think it's important right now, so I make a motion that we table this until a point in time when we have a new city administrator, and one more, when it's time to, uh, deal with something.
It's been moved and seconded to table this item until we get a new city administrator in place. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Three, three. Three. Motion passed.
So, just stay on wait, so if somebody goes to get a motion to, uh, suspend it, then it'll be a three-to-three split again, so I guess we have to move on and bring it back later.
Right. So, next we will go on to approve property and liability workers' compensation insurance renewal.
Before you do that, Doris, could you just state for the record what just, I mean, I'm not sure it was all clear, what just happened? We had a motion to table, there was a tie, you determined that we're moving on because, I just, I'm just stating, asking you to state it for the record.
Well, I don't know what to state except there was a tie.
There was a tie, so we're assuming that there's not going to be a motion to approve it that will pass, because there was a tie on a motion to table, so it's three-to-three, so.
So, should I have done something differently, Lance? I'm sorry.
I was just asking, so just for the record, so people understand.
All right, can we, can we go on, so we don't get caught up in the diatribe that's going to continue for the next.
It's not a diatribe, I'm just asking to have it on the record, what just happened.
Okay, it's just for the record.
And nobody can do anything wrong with it, I'm just asking to have it on the record.
Okay, okay. All right, so, we're on to approve property and liability workers' compensation insurance renewal. Staff report?
The recommendation is to approve, uh, the renewal of property liability insurance and workers' compensation insurance. Each year, the city is required to renew their property liability and workers' comp insurance. As council's aware, staff only has authority to twenty-five hundred, and this is well above, uh, that, so we're bringing it to council to, uh, approve. Um, property liability insurance, overall, the premium, um, has decreased. We have received a dividend credit of approximately ten thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars, and if you look at how the premium was with, it is a thirty-two percent decrease in our annual premium insurance. CIS has been very nice in giving us these credits. This is the second year that we've received a credit, um, which is a, a great benefit to us at this particular time in, in the course of our next upcoming year. Uh, workers' compensation premium, um, has taken a, a bit of an increase based on our, um, rating modification factor and higher rates. Uh, we also did receive a credit of two thousand sixty-five dollars, uh, so our approximate increase is six point three percent.
Public comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to council action. Is there any, uh, discussion? Tiffany?
And they, um, recent, um, Legal Worker Cities magazine, they, there was some different one thousand dollar bonus, bonuses that could be even accomplished even more. I don't know for, is that, is that what part of these?
That, that's not what this is. Um, CIS is, is doing another promotional thing, that if we, we as a city review our personnel policy handbook, do a safety manual, do a fleet manual, several manuals that we need to complete within the next year, um, then we would get a thousand dollars credit per each manual we were able to finish. Uh, we're going to put that on our things to do, but honestly, I don't know how close we will get to that.
Mary Ann, did they say why we, they've lowered our rates?
Uh, we, they, they evidently have, have got, um, how do I want to put this? Yes, they did say it, but I'm going to probably say it wrong. Um, it's dividend, dividends back, they've gotten more money on the interest and everything, so they're re, rebating our, our, our dividends back to us.
Thank you.
So you need a motion?
Uh, yes, I do need a motion to approve this and pay the bill.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the property and liability and workman's compensation insurance renewal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We'll now go to mayor and council comments.
Pardon?
City Attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry, I overlooked that. Select city attorney. Staff report?
Okay, um, you wanted me to go out with RFP to solicit services for the city attorney. We got seven responses. I put together a score sheet that I provided to all of you. You, um, all gave back to Tom, who called me. He called me. And just for the record, uh, he, when he called me back, he said he was going to pick one, his number one would have been the, the attorney's foot river, which overall scored highest, um, of the seven, so the, the question is, uh, what do you want to do now? We've gone out, you ranked them?
Okay, public comment?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And, um, Cascade Locks, so if you're selecting attorneys, does that mean through this budget process that you haven't been utilizing an attorney for, what questions on employee position cuts, making sure you're not breaking any laws?
Uh, we, um, no, I've been using the attorney sparingly, because.
But did you pass that, which was the one, uh?
Which one?
The attorney. The chief position being cut thirty-one percent and maybe even reducing compensation hours, did that get passed by an attorney?
We haven't made that decision yet.
You haven't made the decision to pass it by the attorney?
We haven't made a decision on what to do with that position yet.
So you haven't, so the answer is you haven't talked to an attorney yet on that?
Because we haven't made a decision for, or, or.
Does the attorney, oh, she was making the decision, because if you're breaking a law, that wouldn't.
Okay, this has to do with discussion of hiring an attorney, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So my question, my answer is, no, you haven't made a decision. Like, you said sparingly, and you don't really use them on that because you don't have a decision. That's my answer.
Okay, would anyone else from the public care to comment? Seeing none, we'll go to, uh, council action. So, is there any discussion? Lance?
Uh, it's more of a question, and, um, maybe you could review it just for the discussion of your, uh, what our current contract is, when, if it expires, what our obligations are to that contract.
Yeah, it's got a three-day termination clause, so, uh, if you were to make a decision tonight, for example, I would send Andy Jordan's firm a letter that says that we would plan to terminate our, your, your services in thirty days, and we would pay him for the thirty days. And he has a right to terminate us in thirty days, reciprocal.
Okay, is there any other further discussion? So, Tom?
I have a motion that, uh, could go with, uh, the plan, or the.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the attorneys from Hutterberg.
So it would be to authorize me to negotiate a contract with them, it would come back to you?
Yes.
Okay.
And give thirty-day notice.
Right.
Lance?
Uh, I, well, you made a motion, I'm, I'll pause to see if there's a second.
It's already been seconded.
So, um, I, I, my comment is that, um, uh, we, we ran through the budget for, um, our attorney, um, in the months of January and February, the budget we had left for the rest of the year. Um, and we haven't been, uh, really using an attorney, except as you commented, sparingly, when we have to borrow from other areas so we can, we can pay them. Uh, we have a, uh, highly qualified and experienced law firm that has been representing us, and, and prior to February, had been advising us on a regular basis, that knows issues in this community, that has experience with this community, and understands, um, things that happen here, so, um, by moving to a, um, a new law firm, doesn't have that experience, uh, or expertise with our community, um, we are, uh, I mean, I think the only logical conclusion is that we're going to be spending more in attorney fees so that they can get that experience and expertise for our community, and, um, and that's one of the reasons why I felt that it was important to stick with the attorney that has, has been representing us and has provided us with service. And I don't see them changing it, particularly since it's going to end up costing us more.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the attorneys from Hutterberg, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. So now we will go on to mayor and council comments. Tom?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to apologize to volunteers for, uh, having said I expect people to show up out there. That's something I think I put on myself, and it ruined it proper to, to do that to them. I would, uh, I would hope they would continue to be part of what they love doing, your, your volunteer, if you, you love, um, being part of, of our department, or an EMT, or a paramedic program, and, and I would hope that they will all continue to do that, even though these are tough times financially, but, uh, I think the city's going to, I think the city's on the right track financially, it's going to, it's going to get better, but I do apologize for, for making that, that was, uh, an ill-steady, I guess, put more on my, on myself than, and not the right thing to do, so I apologize. And, um, Sturmer Days was this weekend, and, uh, had great weather on Sturmer Days, quite often they pitch into a radio, radio event, but, uh, what I saw, it was, had people down there, and, and the people there seemed to be having a good time. I know the mountain had a good time, and people seemed to enjoy the, seemed to go over to see the mountain, too, so, yeah, it was, yeah, it was a good weekend for Sturmer Days.
Okay.
That's it.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Tiffany?
Um, have we got a response from the, um, library director on the, what the two thousand dollars would difference that would make in the hours that, can you?
It was like two hours a week.
I think he actually, he gave us something, yeah.
That, when you said it wasn't a fourteen? Well, that was a four before, and we haven't made a decision on whether or not to, except that.
It was two hours a week, and it wouldn't be until after they had received their, their money funding, which is in October, November.
Yeah, it was a...
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then, we just got a, a thing saying that there's gonna be a grand reopening on Thursday, July seventh, so that's, that'll be good news.
Eva?
I just wanted to big, uh, thank you in special to Marianne, because I know that she put many of her own hours into the budget process. Thank you.
With that, if I may, I'd like to thank my staff, because without them, uh, some of this, in fact, the whole staff upstairs, because without Kathy and Sue, the minutes would not have gotten done to the point that they are right now.
Stand corrected, everyone.
So, I thank the whole crew upstairs.
Don?
Well, I'd, I'd like to thank Lyons, and Jesse Groves, and, uh, everybody in the port, and everybody else that helped. And it, they did a good job on the Sternwilers. It, uh, had a good turnout, it was a fun, fun weekend. They did, they worked a lot, hard job.
Okay, Lance?
Uh, I just wanted to address the people that have been coming to the city council meetings, and budget meeting, budget committee meetings over the last month and a half, and attempted to make their voices heard. I think it's important for democratic process. Um, I understood tonight that there's definitely some discouragements, I had some feeling that, uh, government's not listening to you. I, I wanna encourage you to continue participating in democratic process. I believe in it, I believe, um, that by making your voices heard, you do make a difference.
And I'd like to thank everybody who's been involved, um, with the budget, and with, in the council, and, and doing all this, and the staff. I know the staff has worked extremely hard to try to get this information out to us. I just want them all to know that, and, you know, anyway, that was it. So, next we'll go to staff notes. Mr. Carson?
Yeah, just one thing. The Oregon Department of Forestry is proposing to assess a tax on residents of the city. There's, they added an additional hearing tomorrow night, so if, uh, you'd like to, over at Hood River, Hood River City Hall, so you'd like to attend to tell them what you think, one way or the other, in terms of this assessment, it's there.
And it's also the last time that you can officially appeal it?
Well, I could officially comment on it.
When is it out?
Uh, Hood River City Hall, I think it's six-thirty, was it in the Hood River News?
And is this a tax that we have, that, that can happen here, since we have the new tax and fees?
It's a state tax.
It's a state, state tax on everybody in the county that they designate as being in a fire hazard area. So, it doesn't matter if you're in a city or out of a city, whether you have a fire department or don't have a fire department, they can levy, I think it's like sixty-eight dollars on approved property and eighteen dollars on unapproved property.
So, if you have, if you have a tree on your property, you're considered a fire risk.
But that's if they've mapped you and sent you a postcard that said you're on our list. You didn't get a postcard, then you're probably not on their list.
A lot of people threw away the postcard, 'cause they had no idea what it was.
I cut my trees down recently.
Okay?
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, the public works superintendent couldn't make it tonight, so, it, we will go on to televised workshop session. Staff report to discuss the implementation of a work order system.
Well, actually, I was hoping to have, uh, David here talk about this, too, but he's not here, so. He, basically, this work order system has been on, on the books for about eight years, never been implemented. So, it's really, the people who would use it would be city light and public works. David Griffin, who's the superintendent, is interested in getting it implemented. I talked to Tracy about it, Tracy said that, uh, he's busy right now, and he could get to it in October, when the workload lightens up. Um, that's the staff report.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to council action?
Council action?
Action, no action, it's just comment. So, Donna?
I would sure like to see it start, at least, even if we had to hire someone for a while to help. This has been going on for I don't know how many years, and I don't know how we can actually track costs unless we have it. It's guesswork.
Okay, Lance?
Uh, gosh, it would be nice to hire someone that looks like we just cut ten percent of personnel. We're gonna lay someone up, not hire.
Glad you brought that up.
Okay, is there any other comments, discussion? No? What would the council like to do? Yes, Tom?
Well, I understand, though, that we, the last, we did spend ninety thousand dollars on a new computer system. And I would think we should utilize it.
Question, Marianne? What, what's the status of, of the computer program in doing this?
The work order system, none of our, um, the current staff has been trained, and Tracy's the only one who was trained about six years ago. So, until I can get, um, Casell to come here and train us, which we do have in our contract for them to train on modules that we did not get trained on, uh, at the time that Sherrell and I went, but that's gonna be a little bit down the road, seeing as our conversion is still in somewhat disarray in a few of our areas. So, um, I don't anticipate it much before September. At least getting people here to help train staff to be able to use the system.
So...
On that particular module. We are using other modules of our, our, uh, software system, but, uh, and if you're not, if you don't know what a conversion take, a conversion takes a lot of time, and a lot of time to get the bugs out. And we are still dealing with that to this day.
Do you have any idea how long it's gonna take to get the bugs out?
No, I mean, I'm dealing with them every day. So, I, I cannot, in good conscience, estimate when I will be a hundred percent past the conversion process. I cannot tell you that.
And Casell doesn't have any recommendations to...
They are helping us every day to get past this, this point.
Is it a problem that, that you think that their software's bad, and maybe we should...
No, their software's not bad. It's, it's a conversion from going from an old system to a new system. The, the conversion from a, from a, um, DOS-based system to a Microsoft system is not a, uh, a conversion that you can do in a couple of days. It's just not. And, uh, I'm dealing with...
Like learning Chinese?
Especially the utilities program. We are in our third month, and we still ran into problems with the, the auto read system. So, it's not their fault, it's not our fault. It is just something you have to work through. And, and please be patient with us, we are doing our best to do this. And it will come around. But it just takes time.
Need a motion, continue for five more minutes, so we can catch the city services committee?
Okay. I'll second the motion. It's been moved in second to extend the meeting for five more minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Okay, um, let's, uh, go on to the meeting. And, uh...
Do, I mean, do we, do we need to have this discussion? I mean, we already had this discussion earlier tonight, that the mayor can set up a committee, do, I mean, can he just set up the committee without... Well, the, the committee, we have, we have people that have been appointed, that there has never been, you know, the committee needs direction, so the, the mayor or council needs to think of something that they want this committee to work on. I mean, and it's, it's a temporary committee, that's a committee for a year. I don't know if you wanted to plan, you know, a year's worth of stuff for them to work on, or a particular thing? Would that be, would it be grades, something to do with the cemetery? Any of those services are what that committee is supposed to be helping with?
Any of the city services?
Cemetery, utilities.
Cemetery, utilities.
It's listed in, I would have to...
Is there any other tasks that the, that the council can think of that, that we need to set up for this? I apologize, this is... When the, when the city services committee was established, what did, what was the premise? That they were only gonna do, what tasks? I guess, I, I guess I don't totally understand what they're actually trying to accomplish.
Isn't it saying on our website what they... Is that what you're looking for?
You don't have a staff report on it, Richard?
No.
I think, I think I need to get with Richard and...
And the city, the temporary, the city services committee is, they're supposed to be working on things that have to do with public work, city light, emergency services, and cemetery. So, if there is anything in any one of those...
Areas of concern.
Areas that you want them to research, have, bring ideas, recommend, recommendations to the council? I think, well, they should start on emergency services.
Why don't we just, why don't we just start the committee, and then have them come in, and, and we'll go through the items that you said? And, uh... Let them make up a list.
Well, you want to have specific things for them to, to do.
Huh?
You need to check around and come up with specific things for them to, they're, they're to do something specific for you.
Right.
Mayor should be...
We're having a specific...
We could call a meeting, you would, you attend with them, I think we have four...
Right.
And then just maybe between the five of you could discuss those four areas, and see if there's anything that maybe they're interested in. Maybe they could talk to you.
So, rest of the council good with that? Then I, then, uh, I will, Kathy, you and I will set up a meeting tomorrow, I'll talk to you tomorrow about it. Okay?
Take a motion to adjourn.
One question. I, I don't know if anybody here knows, but I, maybe you might remember, Lance. I was trying to get a copy of a report on the nine-one-one thing, and, since March, and I haven't been able to get one yet. Do you know?
Go ahead, Lance.
Okay. Uh, I, I actually did look into it, and I, I talked to it at the parking lot, um, a couple of days after that. But the, the thing is that it's an ongoing project still. There is a binder about everything that's been done on the project. Because it's an ongoing, uh, project, that binder has not been converted into, uh, a report that's published. And you can actually go to the, you know, set up appointment, or whatever, go to the fire department, and take a look at that binder. And it gives you a record of everything's been done on, on the grant.
So, there is not a monthly report?
Um, I, I, yeah, I asked that question as well, and, um, I believe that, uh, and this is, we're going back several months, so my recollection is that, uh, the answer is there was, there wasn't a whole lot of action, uh, because there were, I don't remember the details, but it had something to do with, uh, a cell phone company, and them being concerned that the radios might interfere with their tower. Uh, and so, until that got resolved, um, there was no action, therefore, no report.
Okay. Marianne?
Uh, yes, sir.
It was my understanding that part of the contract was, before you did a monthly payment, that they were supposed to, to give us a, a report. Have they gave you any reports recently?
No, but I have held back, uh, the percentage that I'm supposed to be holding back.
The retained?
Yes.
Right, no, I know that, so, alright, just curious. Alright. Second. It's been moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.